Hello, everybody. If everybody could go ahead and find a seat and we'll try to get going here. I want to welcome everybody to the August 10 Metro Planning Commission meeting. Welcome. And there's a lot more seats up front. Everybody get quieted down. And so we'll go to, first is the adoption of the agenda. The commissioners looked at the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it and the agenda is adopted for August 10. Now we are on to the approval, IMC, which is the approval of the July 27, 2017 minutes. And these were mailed out to the commissioners beforehand. And I hope you had time to review those. Any edits, corrections, additions, comments, questions? Is there a motion for the minutes to adopt? A motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it and the minutes are adopted. Now we're on to item D, the recognition of the council members. And I just write the council members down as I see y'all come in. And so first, Councilman Davis, you want to go first? Come on up, Councilman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, planning staff. I want to thank the commissioners for volunteering their time. And I want to thank the planning staff members for working overtime and working on the weekends, too. We appreciate that and it does not go unnoticed. I am speaking on items that I am deferring tonight. We're going to defer one of our large items for two meetings. But I wanted to talk about it a little bit because my constituents who are asking for it and who live and have owned some of this property for years, they want to get together and they want to come down here. And we laid out a strategy that I need you to come to your association meetings. Sometimes people forget that this was a request by the neighbor. Sometimes people forget that, you know, the guy who lives next door wants his one acre rezoned next door to him. And wait a minute, that's industrial zone property. You know, there's junkyard there, there's a trailer park here. And I think we need to go on information overload. We don't want to bombard the planning commission with a lot of people speaking in support, of course, but we want to have a show of hands. And we want to make sure, because we're all very busy people. And we all remember, oh, this is the one where Councilman Davis had 30 people here. This is the one where he had this here. And if people don't get confused, like, oh, I thought this was that rezoning. Oh, that's right, I'm for this one because, you know, I know what that piece of land is. You know, off of Dickerson, off of Luton Avenue. You know, we know exactly what we're looking at here. It's not in Green Hills, it's not in Bellmead, it's not in Five Points. And I just want to thank everyone for listening, but we're going to defer the large item number nine, which is the 36 acres. Because, and I don't want to seem like we're being disrespectful to the commissioners, but when I have people come out, I may want to have them wearing a tag of what property they own and where they live. Just so it's clear that, okay, this guy lives in a neighborhood or this lady lives in a neighborhood and she owns this piece of land, which is in the same neighborhood. So that we're clear when someone comes up against it saying, well, I live in East Nashville, I'm against it. Just so it's very easy for us to see, okay, they live on that street and they own the property. So they're not being displaced because they have their house, but they have a one acre tract and they want that one acre tract to be RM 20 or RM 9. Planning commission staff are cool with it. You know, we need to support those people that live on that street. I mean, I respect the neighbor who may live in Cleveland Park and who may live in McFerrin, but you don't live in Highland Heights. So those, your neighbor, and people generally, when they see or remember that their neighbor asked for this maybe three community meetings ago, people sometimes don't show up. So they may send a weird email and we get stuff done. Basically what I'm saying is my constituents are coming and, you know, hopefully it's not too long of an agenda. But this is one of the greatest rezone's we're looking at because this is being done by Nashvillians who live a stone throw, stones throw away from these properties. And I just want to thank everybody for their time and thank everyone for supporting my neighborhood and have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Pridemore? I saw. See, come on up. There you go. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. My name's Bill Pridemore. I'm the Councilman in the 9th District in Madison. Here this afternoon regarding items 1A, Madison Community Plan Amendment, and 1B, 1201 Neely's Vine Road SP. I'm choosing to speak at this point of the meeting in order to address my thoughts and plan of action to not only you, but also my constituents, Reagan Smith Associates, who are the petitioners in this project. During the time the issue had been introduced, I'd received many comments from various groups regarding this request. Some in support, some in opposition, and some with a neutral or no opinion at all. The one common denominator I discovered from all of this, that people were receiving false, exaggerating, or even half-truths. So what I would like to do is just kind of today, instead of speaking during the process in favor or against, I am, I'd like to just sit and listen during the planning commission hearing process, let this process take its course, and listen to what is presented today for all parties based on facts and not half-truths. My love, passion, and family roots for this community runs very deep and I would just, I would like to hear the facts as we can get them presented. Regardless of the outcome today and prior to any council action, my thoughts are to bring the community together with the petitioner and to present all the information that's been gained here today and other factual information and see if they can, we can come to some resolution. Thank you for hearing me and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. You know, just before I get to the next Councilman, I want to take a moment of personal privilege. I did notice my former Councilman, Jim Forkham's here. Thanks for coming down, Councilman. Good to see you. Next is Councilman Russ Bulley. See, come on up, Councilman.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. I'm here on two agenda items. First, agenda item number seven that deals with an SP at Kimbark. And I just wanted to briefly comment on that. The applicants held a number of community meetings, which were not very well attended. He's, the support I have received or the emails that I've received and the calls I've received on this are overwhelmingly in support of the project. I did speak with the neighbors who are immediately affected by this and I've not heard any opposition. In fact, I've heard support from them. So without really taking a position on this, I just wanted to let you know what the neighborhood engagement process was like and just exactly what people had to say about it. And I'll leave it to your discretion to weigh in beyond that. The second agenda items, actually second and third are 2A and 2B, and that deals with the Alexander Project. The applicant has held a number of community engagement forums on this, some small, some large. I will note that there currently is, this has received significant attention from the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors and those out in the community. There is a great deal of support, however, there's a significant amount of opposition to this. So, and the directly affected neighbors, we have support and we have opposition. So I'd like to just share with you some of the most common reasons provided to me by some of these neighbors of opposition to this. I hear concerns about traffic because this does sit at the corner of Hillsborough Pike and Overhill Drive, which is a pretty big intersection. I hear that there's some concern about residential, about commercial, being in residential neighborhoods. I understand that this doesn't necessarily meet the legal definition of commercial, but that is a concern of some, a number of residents. Some have brought up spot zoning and you'll hear others speak tonight about a precedent that this may set moving forward, whether the plan amendment is approved or the SP. So again, there's still some work to be done before I personally take a position on this. Part of that work is hearing you guys weigh in on this topic. So I'll leave it to your discretion as to how compelling those reasons are. And with that, I thank you very much for your time and I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Councilman Nick Leonardo? Where's Councilman Leonardo? Hey. Welcome, Councilman.
And I have number 23 and it's been recommended for deferral and I was just going to say that I'm in agreement with that with a brief explanation. This is the Clarksville Pike Udo that we've been working on now for about 18 months or so. And I just want to thank Brandon Burnett, as well as Singay here at the planning and all the planning staff that's helped make this happen. We're going to have one final meeting on the 21st with the community. And so hopefully when we come back, we can have this on the consent agenda on the 24th. And then the other matter is number 16 that has been recommended for deferral until September. We've yet to have a community meeting on that, so I would support that deferral as well. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you coming down. Council Lady Nancy Van Reese, I saw you.
Hello, good afternoon. I am here to talk about item number 15, which is on your consent agenda. And that is correct. It's a 52-acre development on the consent agenda. Just wanted to let that sink in a little bit. I am very excited about the Broadmoor and Ben Allen specific plan. The folks at Perro have done above and beyond on the community engagement on this project. The first, I believe it was in October of 16, was the first community walkthrough of the property. Christian Perro has invested a lot in East Nashville and, Christian's here, raise your hand. This is one of the nice guys. This is one of the good guys that's investing not only his money and his know-how on helping grow community, but also because of his experience in agriculture and formerly with the New York Parks Department. One of the first things he did whenever he got this property was to tag the trees. This development is all about the trees and I'm very, very excited about it. Broadmoor, where it begins on Phase 1, is right across the street from Maplewood High School. Already there, Studio 615 has been engaging with the high school students. We have our new traffic light that's there. There's a lot of really incredible excitement in that area. And as we see that gateway, if you will, coming off of Ellington Parkway into the Madison area, it's an extreme example of what's happening on the northeast corridor as things move forward up to the northeast. One of the exciting things about this project, as you know, is it's part of the Trail Oriented Development Plan. You'll be able to have a greenway that actually goes through the area all the way from Maplewood at that Broadmoor area all the way to Ben Allen. It starts with homes, it goes to townhomes, it incorporates treehouses, it incorporates a number of exciting things, even a working farm on the Ben Allen side when we get to Phase 3. It's a beautiful project. Because it's on consent, you're not seeing it, so I wanted to make sure and speak to it. Because this, if you will, whenever you see the plan, is going to be a coffee table book. It's that good. I'm very excited about it and on behalf of the District 8 community, both in the East Nashville, Maplewood, Graymar, and Madison area, we offer our full and excitement in regard to this plan. I just wanted to put that as part of the record. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Lady. Appreciate you coming down. Councilman Swope, where's? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Your Honors. Thanks for hearing us today. This is about item 13A and 13B, which are both on the consent agenda. But I did feel the need to speak for just a minute on this. Two years ago, this 15-acre tract of land has been in my radar for over two years. There have been condos proposed on it, apartment buildings proposed on it, single-family housing to the tune of 60-some homes over 15 acres, which is all kind of crazy. It also contains a huge, big swath of the Mill Creek watershed. So there's a big conservation easement through the middle of this. I have always wanted this land as a park. The current owners of the land want way too much money to buy it as a park. So we went and found a developer, Meridian, who is Senior Living Center. This is a small 100-bed, very upscale facility being built on the upper part of the land. The rest of it is being donated to the Parks Department for use as a park of the city. A year and a half ago, or two years ago, I got $2.5 million put into the capital improvement budget for this park, which will absolutely make a pad and clean it out and make a nice walking park for everybody in my neighborhood. Make a note, District 4 doesn't have a park. We're parkless. So I have spent two years trying to get a park for free and Meridian has come to the table and has answered that call. We've had, I've probably had 50 community meetings in the past 18 months. At each single one of them, I have talked about this project. So I think everybody in my entire district and surrounding districts has heard of this and no one has had a problem with it. We did have, Anna Greider came out and we had a big community meeting, 100 or so people come out where we went through A to Z exactly what's going to happen between Meridian's facility and the park space. And I have gotten zero negative comment on this from any of the surrounding people. There is one gentleman here tonight from Oakmont across the street who would like to see the building pushed back off of Edmondson Pike a little bit farther. That is his only reservation to this and I have made it my promise to him that I would make sure that between now and third reading on council, as we go through the whole process, that we look at swapping the parking lot from the back to the front with some more foliage to basically push the building back a little bit. But that's the only negative on all this. So I ask that you keep this on consent agenda. I very much appreciate your approval on this and please give my constituents a park.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Everyone deserves a park.
Welcome, Councilman. Thank you so much. Commissioners, we've come before you quite a few times in the last year or so with zoning issues regarding Vision Casey and so I think most of you are pretty familiar with that process. I have items on the agenda for today, items 11A and B. All, the request simply is that MDHA was able to acquire some additional parcels in the interior of that campus. They don't presently own all of that property that's been in the master plan area for a number of years. And so they were able to acquire a couple of parcels. We're just looking at changing the community plan to be consistent with what's immediately adjacent to it. So that's the community plan change. And then the SP portion is just to extend the regulatory SP requirements that are in place for the rest of the district so that the, you know, building, glazing, street design, all those types of things apply. So that's a pretty simple request. We did have a town hall meeting on it and the communication that I always get from my Casey residents is, when can I move in? So there were no, there were no objections from the community to this particular request. So I would request your approval. I believe it's currently on consent.
It is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. I think that's all the Councilmen that I noticed. Any other council members? I can't see everybody. I think that's it. All right. Next, we're on item E, Items For Deferral/Withdrawal. And, hold on, Lisa. If everybody could try to find a seat, there's a lot of seats up front. If you can, that'd be great. That way you're all not standing up. Tell, it's like a Southwest flight here. Everybody grab a seat, scooch over. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Items for deferral or withdrawal. Item number 3, 2016 SP 098001 on page 6 of your agenda. It's a request to rezone from SP to SP for properties located on North Second Street to permit uses limited to one single family or one-two family per parcel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 9, 2017Z 037PR001 on page 7 of your agenda. It's a request to rezone from CS RS5 to RM20A, MULA, R6A, and RM9A for various properties located south of East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10, also on page 7, 2017Z 075PR001. A request to apply a contextual overlay to various properties along Nob Road and staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item 12B on page 8 of your agenda, 2017SP 067001, Delta Avenue's Townhomes SP. A request to rezone from R6 to SP on properties located on Delta Avenue and Trall Street to permit 16 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 16, 2017SP 064001 on page 10 of your agenda, 4927 Buena Vista Pike SP. A request to rezone from RS15 to SP for properties located on Buena Vista Pike to permit up to 57 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 17, 2017SP 065001, to preserve Holiday Inn SP on page 10. A request to rezone from IWD to SP zoning on a portion of property located on Perimeter Court to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 20, 2017SP 071001, the Cherokee Avenue Master Plan SP. A request to rezone from IR to SP for property located on Cherokee Avenue to permit 166 multifamily units and commercial space. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 21 on page 11 of your agenda, 2017S 184001, 3335 Walton Lane subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create four lots on property located on Walton Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 23, 2017UD 004001, the Clarksville Pike Udo at Fairview Center. A request for an urban design overlay on various properties along Clarksville Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24 Planning Commission meeting. And item number 25, 2017Z 084PR001, a request to rezone from SP to RM20A on properties located on Joseph Avenue and staff recommendation is to defer to the August 24 Planning Commission meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa. And I need to recuse myself from item 17. And then let's go through the list and make sure that I got these right. So items for deferral or draw, items number 3, 9, 10, 12B, 16, 17, 20, 21, 23, and 25. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral. Is there a motion? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the deferral, say aye. Pose? And ayes have it, those items be deferred. And now we're on item F, which is the consent agenda.
Okay. First of all, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. In regards to items on consent, as noted to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda, on page 6 of your agenda, item number 5, 2017SP 011001, 504 and 506 Southgate Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning on properties located on Southgate Avenue to permit up to nine residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 7 on page 7 of your agenda, 2017SP 058001, 1811 Kimbark Drive SP. A request to rezone from R10 and R15 to SP zoning on property located on Kimbark Drive to permit six multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 11A, 2017CP 005004, East Nashville Community Plan Amendment, also on page 7. A request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by changing from T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving to T4 Urban Mixed-Use Neighborhood on properties located on South Sixth Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, item 11B on page 8, 2016SP 076002, the Casey Place SP. This is a request to rezone from CS OR20 and RM20 to SP zoning on properties located on South Sixth Street to amend the, and to amend the Casey Place SP to permit the addition of seven parcels with 119 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated plan amendment. Item 12A on page 8, 2017CP 008001, the North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. A request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by amending the community character policy to change from T4 Neighborhood Maintenance and Civic to T4 Neighborhood Evolving on properties located on Trall Street, Delta Avenue, Jane Street, Buchanan Street, and Nassau Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 13A, 2017CP 012-002, the Southeast Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the Southeast Community Plan by changing from T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance to T3 Suburban Neighborhood Evolving on property located at Edmondson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case on page 9 of your agenda, 2017SP 068001, the ALMC Nashville SP. A request to rezone from R40 to SP zoning on property located at Edmondson Pike to [inaudible]. A request to rezone from R40 to SP zoning on property located at Edmondson Pike to permit an assisted living facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated plan amendment. Item 14A on page nine of your agenda, 2017 SP 031001, the Mount View Crossings SP. A request to rezone from R10 to SP for properties located on Mount View Road to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. 14B, 37-79P-002, the crossings at Hickory Hollow PUD cancellation. It's a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development located on Mount View Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 15, 2017 SP 034001, the Broadmoor and Ben Allen SP. It's a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning on properties located on Broadmoor Drive and Ben Allen Road to permit up to 321 multifamily residential units and a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 18 on page 10 of your agenda, 2017 SP 069001, the Peace Love Pause SP. A request to rezone from MULA to SP for properties located on Brick Church Pike to permit all uses permitted by MULA and an animal boarding facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 19, also on page 10 of your agenda, 2017 SP 07001, the Traditions SP. A request to rezone from AR 2A and SP, to SP zoning on properties located on Nolansville Pike and a portion of property located on Pettis Road to permit an assisted living facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 22, 98-73P-005, the Hickory Hills PUD revision. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a planned unit development for property located on Hickory Hills Boulevard to permit a restaurant. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 24 on page 11 of your agenda, 2017 Z 071 PR 001. A request to rezone from RS V to R6A for property located on Batavia Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 26 is a contract amendment for Michael Briggs. It's located on page 12. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item 27, a contract renewal for Laura Hardwick on page 12. Staff recommendation is for approval. And item 13, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items. That's it, page 12. Sorry. That's all.
Thank you. So let's go over these so that everybody's on the same page. So this is the consent agenda and the items that are on the consent agenda are items five, seven, 11A, 11B, 12A, 13A, 13B, 14A, 14B, 15, 18, 19, 22, 24, 26, 27, and 32. And I need to recuse myself from item 22. Any, you've heard the, is that correct, Lisa?
That is correct.
All right. So commissioners, you've heard the items for the consent agenda, which will be adopted. Any questions? There's a motion to approve and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? No. Ayes have it and the consent agenda is adopted. So now we're on the items to be considered and so if, and Lisa, make sure, where'd Lisa go? Oh, make sure that I read these out, the items that we are going to consider and then all the other items have been taken care of for tonight. So the items on public hearing tonight that we will consider are 1A, B, C, 2A, 2B, item four, six, and eight. Let's make sure. And if everybody could quickly and quietly exit the room, we really appreciate you all coming down. So, Lisa, are those items correct? All right. So we are ready for, and then again, if we have more seats that have opened up, if y'all could come up, find a seat, it will help you out, so. All right, everybody, if you're having a conversation though, you gotta, we're ready to hear these. Okay. Item one.
Thank you. Item one is-
Well, before you start though, this is an amendment to the policy, so just, it's going to need six votes, just so you know. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. This is a request to amend the Madison Community Plan to change the policy about five acres on Neely's Bend Road. The current zoning is RS 10 and a little bit of industrial PUD overlay. There are two associated requests to cancel the PUD and to rezone the larger area to an SP. And this plan amendment is necessary in order to support the associated SP. This is the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Map. You'll see the property, the proposed amendment area outlined in red. It is identified in the Growth and Preservation Concept Map as a neighborhood and it's approximately two miles away from a Tier One center. Current policy is T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance for the amendment area as well as the majority of the surrounding properties. There is a special policy on an adjacent property which provides additional infill guidance for redevelopment of a former industrial site, commonly known as the Odom Property or the Odom Sausage Factory, which is currently regulated by that industrial PUD. T3 areas are moderately developed with nature strategically incorporated into the site. These areas are completed with four elements, open space, neighborhoods, centers, and corridors. A complete suburban neighborhood features a mixture of housing types that are integrated into that neighborhood and suburban centers play an integral role in completing these neighborhoods with an option to walk or bike to daily goods and services. The current policy, suburban neighborhood maintenance, is intended to maintain the character of developed neighborhoods. These areas have an established development pattern of low to medium density residential development. Change in these neighborhoods typically occur when buildings are expanded or replaced or when infill sites are developed and that new development is expected to maintain the character of the surrounding areas. This request is to amend the policy from T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance to T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center. This policy is applied to areas that conserve the surrounding neighborhoods and where there are enough homes to support that center. These are typically located at intersections and along arterial boulevards with access to transit. I want to give a brief, make a brief comment on how we got here. The request presented for consideration this evening is significantly different than the initial application that was submitted for the plan amendment. That initial proposal includes, included a larger area and proposed extensive changes to the current policy and the special policy. That is no longer the case. However, that initial plan amendment was presented to the community on two separate occasions. First, on April 11 by the applicant team, staff was not present. And second, on June 21 at a staff-led community meeting at the Madison Precinct. Approximately 65 community members and residents were present, as well as the applicant team and council member Pridemore. The majority of the community members expressed opposition to the plan citing the rural character of Neely's Bend, increased density, traffic safety, and stormwater. Comment forms collected during the meeting did outline positive attributes of the plan focusing on the addition of housing options in the area and the proposed layout of the associated SP. After receiving this feedback, the applicant team requested to defer that initial community plan amendment and submitted a revised proposal that would require a policy change for three properties along Neely's Bend, which are outlined in the purple on your screen. Again, this policy change is necessary in order to support the associated SP. The surrounding development is representative of a conventional suburban residential form. The primary land use of the immediate surrounding area is single-family with several townhome duplex and multifamily developments within a one-mile radius of the plan amendment area. Neely's Bend is, Neely's Bend Road is designated as an arterial boulevard in the Major and Collector Street Plan and the site has direct access to transit. The subject property is located in the northern portion of the Neely's Bend Peninsula. So this slide is beginning to show you the suburban development form of Madison and Neely's Bend. And that, that development form begins to transition into a more rural environment, approximately a mile and a half south of the subject property. And that transition is better illustrated in this, this policy slide with more urban policies located here along Gallatin Pike. We have T4 Community Center and T4 Mixed-Use Corridor, sorry about that, which transitions into suburban policy, institutional and civic policy as you get closer to the subject property. And then that suburban policy transitions into a more rural policy with conservation and open space. The closest concentration of daily goods and services is approximately two miles west of the subject property along Gallatin Pike in those urban policy areas. And there is a gas station, which is indicated here with the black triangle, approximately a mile south of the subject property. But the majority of the surrounding land uses are institutional. So we have healthcare facilities identified in the yellow dots. We have several places of worship and multiple schools within a one-mile radius of the plan amendment area. You can see here that the, the transit connectivity in the region does connect the subject property, it does provide transit service for the subject property to those schools, institutional uses, as well as the centers and corridors and that concentration of daily goods and services along Gallatin Pike. So based on staff's analysis of the surrounding land uses, policies, transportation network, and the employment and service providers in the area, staff finds that the proposal does meet the intent and the application of the T3 Suburban Neighborhood Center policy. Applying suburban neighborhood policy, suburban center policy, excuse me, at this location works to complete the suburban transect and the proposed center is appropriately scaled to the surrounding neighborhoods. This application of a center policy on a major street with transit access is consistent with the guidance of Nashville Next and will increase the potential for enhancements to improve a disconnected and underserved area. And for those findings, staff is recommending approval. Okay. So the next case is the associated specific plan zoning request. And this is a request for specific plan zoning to permit a mixed-use development on properties located at 1201 Neely's Bend Road. The site totals approximately 33 acres and the properties included are outlined in red. As Dara mentioned, this is the former site of the Odom Sausage Company on that larger parcel in the rear. And as an additional point of orientation, this is Neely's Bend Middle School just to the southeast. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated plan amendment. If the associated plan amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. The current zoning on the property is RS 10, which would allow single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. However, the majority of the site indicated by that black hatch line is within an industrial planned unit development overlay. And that PUD permits food processing and packaging type uses associated with the former use of the site. As Dara mentioned there, the majority of the site is T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance Land Use Policy. There is some conservation policy present, which indicates some streams and associated buffers in wetland areas. And then there is a special policy. The special policy applies to the largest parcel, 024, and that small square within it, 042. And the special policy provides guidance on infill development for this property. It identifies the site as appropriate for infill because of the existing entitlements, the proximity and access to centers and corridors, as well as the opportunity to provide additional housing choices in an area with a predominantly single-family development pattern. As Dara mentioned, the, the existing neighborhood maintenance policy will remain in place for the majority of the site. The special policy will remain in place everywhere that it's currently in effect. And then the neighborhood center policy would apply just along the Neely's Bend Road frontage of the site. The special policy calls for infill to increase housing diversity and choice, but it indicates that the uses should be consistent with those allowed in an RS single-family zoning district. This again is also neighborhood maintenance, which calls for maintaining the general character of the neighborhood. And this particular plan addresses those goals by incorporating single-family lots but also single-family cottages, which are detached, single-family product, but not on individual lots. So it's an alternative that's still consistent with the single-family character of the area. The SP also improves vehicular and pedestrian connectivity throughout the area. And then the townhomes and neighborhood service and retail that are proposed along Neely's Bend are consistent with the goals of the neighborhood center policy that Dara just outlined for us. So this is the plan for the site. Moving from Neely's Bend Road back interior to the site, the orange boxes along the front are 16 townhome units. The retail building would be 7,000 square feet of uses. The uses are specifically outlined and limited in the SP and they would be retail, restaurant, grocery, personal care service, and medical office uses. And that's all within the, the portion of the property that will be in neighborhood center policy if the plan amendment is approved. And then moving back into the site, there are 157 detached, single-family cottages, those are the smaller tan boxes, and then 22 single-family lots organized around the rear perimeter of the site. Vehicular connections will be made that connect some existing stub streets on the perimeter of this property. So there will be a new connection to Neely's Bend here, which will connect through to Apache Lane, which stubs out here, and that will be a public road. Existing Canton Pass currently stubs out at both the north and southern boundaries of this property and that will be connected through with a public road. And then there's a system of public roads and alleys, as well as some private drives to serve some of the units near the front throughout. The sensitive environmental features that are indicated by the conservation policy, the stream and associated buffers, have been incorporated into open space, which is integrated throughout the site plan around those features. There will be sidewalks internal to the development, as well as sidewalks along Neely's Bend that meet the Major and Collector Street Plan standards. And then there's also a proposal for an off-site sidewalk. It would extend from the eastern side of the property along Neely's Bend to the Neely's Bend Middle School, where there is existing sidewalk infrastructure. So it's completing that connection of approximately 720 linear feet, which would serve this development and surrounding developments for better access to the middle school. The plan includes character imagery for each of the unit types, as well as architectural standards for setbacks, glazing materials, and recessed garages. Height is limited to two stories and 35 feet for the commercial building, three and a half stories and 50 feet for those townhomes along the Neely's Bend Road arterial, and then two stories and 35 feet, two and a half stories and 35 feet for the single-family cottages and lots as it transitions into the interior of the site. This layout does transition from more intensity along the corridor to less intense, single-family uses at the rear and it integrates the development into the- And it integrates the development into the surrounding neighborhood through landscape buffer yards and larger setbacks along the perimeter, as well as that overall transition and intensity. It balances providing housing choice and neighborhood services within the restrictions that the special policy places on the types of housing that should be located on this infill site. And therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to approval of the associated plan amendment. If the associated plan amendment is not approved, staff would recommend disapproval. And then to quickly also walk you through the associated PUD cancellation. So this PUD is on the larger property to the rear, and we are recommending approval, subject to approval of the associated zone change. The associated zone change is not approved, then recommending disapproval. As we mentioned, it's an industrial PUD. And because the special policy actually specifically calls out that this PUD should be reevaluated if the Odom Company use were to cease, and the residential uses proposed by the SP are more consistent with the surrounding development than the industrial uses that would be permitted by this PUD, and more appropriate in this context, staff is recommending approval of the PUD cancellation.
Thank you very much. So we're considering all three items for the public hearing, but then we'll vote on these separately. And then the amendment, the policy amendment needs to have six votes, just so everybody's clear on that. So we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes to speak, and you can save two minutes of the 10 for your rebuttal, if you would like.
I would like to reserve two minutes, please.
Okay, then you'll have eight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith &amp; Associates. We appreciate this opportunity to speak on this application tonight. I'm here on behalf of my client, Dennis DeGracia. As you see, we're looking at three different items here. One, a general plan amendment that would get neighborhood services into this area. Two, on the SP. And then three, on the cancellation of the industrial PUD. And that's kind of where I wanted to start. The Odom Sausage Factory used to be the occupant of this property. They produce many, many millions of pounds of Tennessee Pride sausage. And over the years, they used to have 180 employees that would commute here on a daily basis and two tractor-trailers that would deliver products on a daily basis, producing over a million pounds of sausage a week. That being said, that time has passed. We have an opportunity here to move forward, much as you see the outer areas of Nashville growing today. That being the case, we're excited about this opportunity and this SP that we put before you. I want to speak a little bit to the type of this development and this neighborhood that we're proposing here. This is primarily a single-family cottage development. These are people that will have access to common, open space park areas. They will front on streets that are lined with sidewalks to each side, street trees to each side. The parking will be hidden to the rear of these so that you can really maximize the opportunity of those streets. And the streets serve as a pedestrian corridor, as well as a automotive corridor connecting to key services and pedestrian and automotive routes. But they also serve as a park in themselves, connecting key destinations within the community. As mentioned by Ms. Sanders and Ms. Shepherd, we have also shown some more conventional single-family lots that you see in the yellow on the plan, that transitioned to the existing single-family lots that back up to this particular property. That being said, we wanted to promote a walkable community. We wanted to have an opportunity to integrate neighborhood services in this area. As you can see, there's not a lot of neighborhood services opportunity along this route. We wanted these diverse housing opportunities and an opportunity to provide new housing in this area. You see multiple schools within walking distance. Immediately next door is Neely's Bend Middle School, and, you know, less than a half-mile away is the elementary school. So we feel like this is a perfect opportunity to provide that housing for this area. I want to speak to the open space. And the open space for this property, the overall property is just over 33 acres. We're providing 12 and a half acres of overall open space for two reasons. One, to accommodate existing natural resources, which is tree canopies and streamlines, but also a preservation of that existing canopy along our boundary to transition better to our neighbors. But then, we have about 7.64 acres of active open space. These are parks that would be accessed not only by our residents, but the residents within the community and opportunities there. We are also looking at salvaging the existing barn that is on site and the existing office building of the Odom family that is located on site, too, that would be reincorporated as a community center for this neighborhood. So we feel like it's very important to understand how much open space we are preserving here. The public roadway, we're providing just under a mile of new public roadway for this development, and just over two miles of public sidewalks for this development, including, as mentioned by Ms. Shepherd earlier, a 724 linear foot of sidewalk that, if you're looking at the screen, goes from our site, off our site, towards the middle school. And we see this as a huge benefit, not just to our residents, but the overall community. Currently, they would have to cross Neely's Bend to get on an existing sidewalk to take them to the middle school and cross back over Neely's Bend to get there. This would give them a route without crossing that particular roadway system. So we feel like this is a big plus, not just for us, but the community as a whole. That being said, we feel like we have taken time. We have heard comments and suggestions. We've had multiple meetings. As mentioned earlier, we've had two neighborhood meetings. We have made adjustments per comments from those meetings on every step of the way. We have worked with staff very diligently to make revisions per their input as well. We feel like we have met the requirements in working through this process, both with planning and public works, and that we have a real opportunity here to do something unique for this area and be a positive impact on this community. With that, we have several people here to answer your questions at the appropriate time, and would appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir. And you'll have two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Well, come on up. And you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Preston George, 721 House Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for letting me speak a minute. I've had the opportunity for my entire life to be around Odom Sausage Plant and around the office. And quite frankly, when Odom Sausage Plant left, it left an empty kind of eyesore to the community. It passed by, it was closed, the gates were shut. Ever since 11200 Neely's Bend LLC has came in and they've had this project that they're trying to do, it's going to be able to kind of fix what Odom's left open. It's going to be able to provide single-family homes that fit in with the area and do also have retail space. As Nashville's expanded, many tri-cities of Nashville have had the opportunity to cash in on this reward of having people come in and move in. But Madison hasn't quite had that type of reward yet, and with this plan, it would give them that reward, just that reward. This project is ripe for Madison businesses, schools, and will give Madison a greater voice in the city. Now, this project provides a much-needed, modernized housing supply. Many of the houses in Madison were built in the '60s and '70s. So having a new breadth of fresh air to the Madison area will help modernize it and will also allow for more families to move in and make Madison prosperous like it once was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. If everybody is here to speak in support, if y'all would line up so that we can make sure we get through this. Thank you for coming down, sir.
Thank you. My name's Thomas George. I live at 721 House Avenue. I've been associated with the Odom property since Odom's had it. We've had two owners of the property, and so far, this right here by far exceeds anything that's been planned to be put in there. With the PUD that they're wanting to cancel out, that's the best thing that could happen to Madison, because we had several people that wanted to go in there that we didn't need. So like I said, I approve it.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
What I need to... Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Edward Gray, 549 Pueblo Drive. With the plan as is, it allows for non-idle time for students. I'm a Metro employee, and with the growth of this, I enjoy what was said earlier, the walking to school, a walking community. I am directly affected by the project because the back of the project is right at the back of my fence. So I'm not just for it for myself, for the actual community, because of growth. With growth brings new ideas, new businesses. There could be many talking points for this. But one of the main things, bringing the growth and the businesses, is going to be the main thing that I enjoy. I was trying to find some reasons not to approve it, but there are none for me, especially having it directly affect me by being in the back. The only thing that I ask that the builders are to leave a row of trees so they don't have to buy any curtains. So that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, so I know there's a lot of y'all here. If y'all would line up behind the microphone and remember, state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes. And the one thing, we definitely welcome everybody's comments, but try to not repeat the comments that have been made before. And thank you all so much for coming down. Welcome, former councilman.
Thank you, Chairman. Former councilman. 11 o'clock, okay. I came to speak against the amendment and subsequent rezoning simply because, as a councilman for 2003-2011, I attended many meetings for the planning department, many sub-area meetings, planning about handing out maps and everybody in the community drawing what they wanted in community open space, preservation, and whether there could be a low-density area, for instance, along Gallatin Pike Corridor, but not down in the bend. Most of that was preservation and leaving its open space and low-density. So I attended many meetings over that period of year and always, you know, thought that, you know, as a community, that's what everybody favored. I attended the meeting that she mentioned the other night about this development, and I didn't see anyone, 25, 28 people there. And I know she's got the camp, but I didn't see anyone who was in favor of it, except the developers. And so it's one of those deals where the community plan, like I said, is only two years old, if I got my dates right. So why would we be coming along and changing what people wanted simply two years ago? I mean, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense that we would do that quickly, because I don't think people's attitude changed that much in that period of time. Second thing I want to mention real quick is the traffic problem, which you always hear, I know, when you get developments. But again, that was something, when I was a councilman, the traffic flow, we had traffic fatalities, traffic accidents left and right. 2005, Public Works came out with a study, and we did some road improvements that basically cut down. We had four young people killed within a year on Neely's Bend Road. And what they did, what Public Works did, and the mayor, actually cut down those accidents and deaths. And all I'm saying is, I don't want anything to take a step backwards and then start putting, you know, a lot of extra problems and accidents on that road again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and your address.
My name is Brenda Hogan. I live at 704 River Pass. And if you look, my street is directly across from one of their entrances. And those cottages are going to be the tall, skinny homes. They will only have two-car parking at the back with an alley behind the back. There will be no parking in front of the homes or on the side. And anyone comes to visit them, because each one of those cottages are only going to have two parking spaces, there won't be any place for someone to visit to park. They will have to park on the street. I'm glad that they added the homes at the back, but they have got too many homes in that area. We've got denser homes coming in other areas of Neely's Bend at Forest Park. There are other places in Madison, they're doing the same thing. I just would like for them to have fewer homes in there and have it be more like what Neely's Bend is actually like, and not what they are trying to make us think it is. My husband and I have lived in Madison our whole lives, and we don't want to see all these people crammed into a small area like that with parking on the street. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Colin Kuzgan. I live at 639 Canton Pass, which is, as now, a dead end, which is why I actually bought my house there, because I loved the idea of having a safe, spacey home. Just like I, all of my neighbors on Canton Pass and all of the other neighbors on all the other passes that line Neely's Bend, we bought out on Neely's Bend specifically because we didn't want to be in a very dense, populated area. And we knew when we bought the homes that that's what the footprint was. We wanted space, we wanted a home. We didn't want an investment, and we didn't want a pizza place within five minutes. That wasn't really what we thought progress was. Progress was having a sense of security, a bucolic atmosphere, being able to see the foxes in the hills, or the deer, or the turkeys. That is why we went there. And I am not against progress, I'm against stupid progress. And unfortunately, that's what Nashville's experiencing now. I've had so many friends in other areas of the city, in the metropolitan area, being displaced by all of these dense projects, throwing up homes just to make a buck. And the problem is, the people who are getting the progress are the people who are making money off of it, not the people who actually have to live in these neighborhoods and deal with the intense traffic that is a result of it, the noise factor, everything that goes with increased population. So I believe that progress can be defined in so many different ways, and I don't need a developer to tell me that progress is shoving all of these homes in an area that is specifically not zoned for that. And it's not zoned for that for a reason. So I know that there are a lot of people here that are against this, because they, like I, bought their homes there specifically to feel like they had space, safety, and a great, positive environment. And I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Routledge. I live at 709 Nick's Pass with my husband, Richard, who couldn't be here because he's out of town. But he agrees with me that we are against this development. We would actually see this from our window. We can actually look out onto this development. It's inappropriate for the area. I bought my house, we bought our house two years ago in 2015. The reason again, because it was a nice, quiet, rural, suburban neighborhood. Neely's Bend is a two-way, dead-end street, and it is not meant to hold the capacity of the traffic that is going to come down, be added to this road. There is a public transportation, there's the bus number 76, take it all the time. It's a circular. It does not go up and down Neely's Bend. If you get the bus from across the street at Nick's Pass where this bus stop is, it'll take you a half an hour to get up to Gallatin Pike. A lot of people don't take that bus for that reason. This is not an alternative to a car. The sidewalks that they're going to build are going to be sidewalks to The sidewalks that they're going to build are going to be sidewalks to nowhere. Yes, they will go to the school, but on the other side of that property, there are no sidewalks. So the sidewalks are not an amenity. I am not underserved. I don't need a grocery store. I don't need a coffee shop. If I want coffee, I'll go to the kitchen. So therefore, I cannot see, this is way too overdeveloped.
Hold on. Yeah. It's pretty quiet.
And I believe that the community plan is important because there's a reason why there's a community plan. There's a reason why the city brought the community together to develop a plan. And to disregard that plan because a developer is telling us that we're underserved, that they're doing us a favor, to me, is not the correct way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go to the next one, you know, let's, no cheering out loud, let's make sure we keep it professional. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Joe Willis. I live at 2219 Neely's Bend Road. That's near the dead end of Neely's Bend. I was born in Madison, have lived my entire life in Madison. I was born actually less than a mile from where this property exists. I chose to settle in Neely's Bend because of the quality of the neighborhood and the spaciousness of the houses and the large yards. My wife and I have raised two daughters in Neely's Bend, one of which is still in school. The other has chosen to settle back in Neely's Bend, lives on Canton Pass. We can't handle the extra traffic. The extra traffic that will be brought by this is a major problem. There are also some major water problems with this property. Between now and the last public meeting that were held at the police precinct, there was some major flooding, and Neely's Bend was actually closed off for a short time and a couple of other roads. Peeler Trail and actually Berwick Trail were actually closed for a couple of hours because of excess flooding. There's nowhere for this water to go, and even though you may put detention and retention ponds in place, there's not a good way to catch that water. It's an existing problem now, and it's not going to get better when you remove the impervious surface that's there. So we're totally opposed to this. We're opposed to retail space. If we wanted retail space, we would have settled on Gallatin Road. We don't want retail space. We don't need retail stores. That's not part of our community. We don't want the lights. We want to be able to see the stars at night. We enjoy that. And so we would like to keep this the way it is. We believe that the base zoning that allows a limited number of single-family houses is the proper way for this property to be developed and not to put small houses jammed together and let people make the decisions for our community who aren't vested there. We are vested. We chose to be there. I've been at the end of Neely's Bend for 30 years and in Madison all my life, so let us make the decisions of what Neely's Bend needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Tanya Floyd. I live at 1737 Hudson Road. I've only been living in Madison for seven years and off of Neely's Bend that whole time. I lived in Hillsborough Village for 22 years. Whenever I was in my 20s, I worked so hard, I was able to buy a house there. My house was totally paid off, so I didn't have to move away. I moved away from Hillsborough Village because of the high density, because of how crazy it was getting. I had coffee shops. I had great restaurants. I had everything right there that wasn't what I wanted. I wanted what was in Neely's Bend. I wanted to be quiet. I wanted to see Turkey. I wanted all the reasons that these people have spoken about. We don't need this retail space. The plan was made for a reason. It needs to stay that way. This is a really tight-knit community. I have personally passed out 480 flyers in the last few days. I started a website over this, and I've spoken to so many people down there that I didn't even know existed, all shapes, size, ethnicities. Everybody lives there. It's one of the only communities that's built the way it is, that everybody can live there together. Every economic type of person is there. Like I said, culturally, every person is there. We're okay with our yards. We're fine with all of this. If we wanted these situations, we would have lived in these neighborhoods. We would have moved to these places. We would not have moved out there. Please consider the fact that this is our home, and we love it the way that it is, and we don't want it to change. I want to retire in this community, along with all these people that have been there and are already retired into this community. We're really invested, and it's not fair for all of this to be taken away from us, especially since the plan is only two years old for what we wanted. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Daniel Atkins. I live at 708 River Pass. So I have all the reasons that everyone else is up here to not approve this, but I also live on the street directly across from the exit of this property. I will be able to see all of this, hear all of the construction for the next three to five years, which is terrible. I don't feel like I'll be able to enjoy the acre and a half of property that I purchased to be outside and know all of my neighbors. So please, please listen to us and do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me be here. My name is Jessie, and I live at 1216 Berwick Trail. So Canton Pass, dead ends, basically into my driveway currently. I am here deeply concerned about this and in opposition of it. I purchased our place back in 2015. We were drawn to the neighborhood because of its rural characteristics. We felt like so much of Nashville had lost its appeal with poorly constructed, thoughtless dwellings, as they relate to any cohesive neighborhood feeling or purpose, and we were thrilled to find our place off of Neely's Bend and felt like we had lucked out to escape what's happening in other neighborhoods in Nashville. The Neely's Bend neighborhood is simply not equipped to handle this kind of density. Why a rural country road would be a candidate for such development is shocking to me and a lot of my neighbors, most of my neighbors. Not only is it not equipped, it stands in direct contrast to the core of what the neighborhood is. The community plan states a desire to retain its rural quality and character. Urban density belongs in an urban center. This would be urban sprawl that doesn't suit the actual community at hand. As a resident of Madison, I do support growth there, but I support sustainable growth and growth that makes sense, not growth that stands in direct opposition of what the people that actually live there desire. When we bought our house, I became very good friends with my neighbor who's 86 years old now, and he's lived in the neighborhood since he was six years old. So for 80 years, he's been there. He often comes over and shares stories of his childhood. He drives us around, tells us who owned that, what happened there. And it's so much fun to hear his stories and get to know him. He left for a short time after high school, after enlisting, and he chose to return back to that neighborhood and has been there his entire life. He built his home with his own hands, which me and my husband are also doing, and he has stayed here his whole life. This is a neighborhood where people move to stay, and that was my desire, was to have a great childhood, a safe childhood for my kids in a safe neighborhood. So thank you. I know I've gone too long. Please listen to the people that actually live here. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello, thanks for letting me speak. I'm Kelly Boyd. I live at 1420 Neely's Bend. I'm about a mile down the road from the development. And I'm going to loosely quote the Honorable Nancy Van Reese, and I'm here tonight because we want development for us, not to us. We really appreciate the fact that we've got somebody from the outside coming in to tell us what we need and what's good for our community, but as you heard tonight, most of us really don't believe that. We moved to the bend because we wanted to get away from the high-density development. This is just really too high-densitive housing. I think some of the concerns I have is that if you guys were to approve something like this, you really set a precedent. We've got several parcels in the bend that are still available that could be developed in this nature, and this is really against the character of our neighborhood and what we represent as a community. We're a very tight-knit community. We know each other. We waved to each other when we're going down the roads, and we like it like that. Additionally, I wanted to bring up something that, you know, we've heard the word "traffic", and Neely's Bend is a really, it's a two-lane road. It's already got a lot of traffic on it, and this is going to really put a lot of stress on that system. You're probably going to hear in the rebuttal that a traffic study was done, and I know there was one done, but just want you to know that was done by contractors that were hired or on staff of the developers, and I think that represents a conflict of interest and should be considered, you know, as, maybe that needs to be relooked at. I don't know that that's a really, that's maybe more of a biased opinion on what the traffic is there. But anyway, I just want to close and say, you know, we have a really great community feel, and this high-density housing does not fit with anything else that's present in the bend. And we do appreciate growth, but we want it to be in keeping with what we have now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's, whoa, sorry. Hi, my name's Matt Campbell. I live at 600 Hidden Acres Drive down in the bend. I'd like to first respectfully clarify a comment that Ms. Sanders had pointed out. I just want to make sure everybody understands. She listed two businesses that are nearby, TriStar Healthcare and Signature Healthcare. The first is a mental health facility, 102 beds, and the other is a nursing facility of about 120 beds. So they're not, it's not like somebody's going to the doctor's office nearby. I know traffic's been spoken about, but I do have some hard data. According to TDOT traffic data from 2015, there are stations near Neely's Bend Road and Larkin Springs. Approximately 11,000 trips were made on Neely's Bend Road. At the intersection of Neely's Bend Road and Gallatin Road, the number of trips recorded were 14,000 per day. With the data two years old, we can surmise that those have increased since 2015. Mr. Thompson, in our meeting earlier this summer, stated that approximately 2,600 additional trips would be added to Neely's Bend Road. That's an approximate 25% increase. That's a significant increase. I see this problematic for most cars that funnel up Neely's Bend Road in the morning and the afternoon commute. Excuse me. Citing information from Metro Public Works, the intersection of Neely's Bend and Cheyenne is being improved because of congestion around Neely's Bend Elementary and Middle School and is heavy as during the morning commute. That comes from the Public Works website. In closing, I'd like to say that Neely's Bend, like Pennington Bend and Bell's Bend, is a unique area of Nashville in the bend of the river, and Nashville has rejected development in those other two bends to keep them rural, and I would like to see Neely's Bend stay the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you, everybody. This is Sasha Mullins-Lester, 1100 Berwick Trail. Altogether Madison. I am one of the founders of Altogether Madison. I also represent Madison Community Alliance, and I was also part of Nashville Next, representing Madison. Altogether Madison raised funds and hired an economist, Mr. Randall Gross, many of you know him, and he's been working on a strategic plan and marketing analysis for Madison. J.D. Elliott is our mentor in this, and we all have goals to revitalize Madison, but not in a greedy matter. This sticker is being used as a tactic by the developers, and it's quite an insult to the community because we've been working very hard for the last four years to improve There are land parcels yet to be developed, which I've already done a research on and I've sent to the planning commissioners. You'll note that that is only just a partial study, but the land to be developed in Neely's Bend is significant. There are also several PUD parcels in Neely's Bend yet to be developed. There is also 52 acres at Manese and Hudson that's set to be agritourism with up to 500 visitors per day. This all adds significantly to the traffic, as you can well imagine. The stormwater systems out there are terribly flawed. I live in a river community. When the water hits, oh my goodness, it's really not cool. Those channels are all overgrown, they're broken, they're dilapidated. There's arguments of who is in charge of the blue line. No, you know, people can't touch this and that. The point is, is that that's going to be a lot of water dumping. It's not consistent with what Nashville Next was all about. Nashville Next was low to moderate density, moderate on a very moderate, modest, modest level. This is high-density. This is urban sprawl. This is crazy. It's nothing to do with what we all came to conclusion with, with Nashville Next. So I, please, please, consider. And I will continue sending you more information. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Rick Williams. I live in, actually, 120 Winthorpe Place in Old Hickory now, but I've been a lifelong resident, only recently moving from Neely's Bend. Still have one tract of land there I own, but my heart, even though I've moved from Neely's Bend, I've lived there 58 years, and my heart will always be there, and I always want to support my neighbors. I want to talk about the traffic. That's the thing that seems to be the factor here. I want to point out, in the study done by the engineer, they only studied up to Randy Road and Neely's Bend. There's another almost probably mile, or at least three-quarters of a mile left of Neely's Bend that the study wasn't done. And so we really questioned that study. Why did they not study all of Neely's Bend? Because all of Neely's Bend will be driven on. And again, that's just one of the things that we find, you know, we think that at least at a minimum should be deferred today. An independent engineer brought in to study the traffic because, as former Councilman Forkum said earlier, that is a narrow, two-lane road. I'm sure at some time in your life, all of you have been out there and driven on it, and it's a dangerous road, and to add 25% more in traffic is just not a good thing. Currently, you know, we're not here to stop the development. He can start tomorrow, I think, on 128 houses. There's nothing we can do about that. And we welcome him to do that, but we just think this is way too many houses for this tract of land. The size of the lots are much different than any surrounding lots. You can look up on the board there, and it would be a much more dense development. We urge you not to change our community plan. I think that's a bigger issue, changing the community plan than the zoning right now because we all went to those meetings. I put little yellow stickers everywhere, and I've gotten to know Craig Owens, be like, he's my best friend. I went to so many of those meetings, and we did that for a reason. We wanted to make sure it stayed that way. So I hope you won't change the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, thank you. First of all, in regards to the community plan, the only community plan part that we're requesting to change is where the retail neighborhood services would be. That would be a 7,000-square-foot retail center. We'd see very small use in terms of small restaurant, whether that be coffee or pizza or something like that. Those would be restricted uses per this zoning. Comparing it to a Hillsborough Village is just apples and oranges and not consistent in regards to, in regards to this being high-density, this would not be considered high-density as defined by Metro Nashville.
Hold on, sir. Stop the clock.
The housing that's shown...
Hold on, wait one second.
Sorry.
Everybody, we need to be respectful of every speaker, okay? All right.
Yes, the majority of the product that's north or just above the retail center there, we are not asking for an amendment to the property there because it is not needed. So that housing fits within the general plan as it currently stands. In regards to traffic, like any other project, we sit with Metro Public Works. We do a scoping meeting. They define those areas, and we produce a traffic study in regards to that. We have done that. That has included Larkin Springs, Randy Road intersection, and Cheyenne. And Larkin Springs is a three-lane thoroughfare that leads to a signaled intersection at Old Hickory Boulevard. So we've met the standards. After doing that traffic study, we still meet acceptable standards as per defined by Nashville Metro. Let's see, in regards to construction, that is part of the gross process. In regards to Canton Pass and our connections, those are valuable connections that is part of the planning process that we feel like is an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. How about we start with the council lady?
Are we discussing one at a time? Is that correct?
Yes, we'll consider one item at a time, but the public hearing is for all three items.
Gotcha, which was helpful. Okay, so now we are talking at the moment simply about the Madison Community Plan Amendment. And then we'll talk about the SP and the PUD cancellation separately as we vote for this.
Yeah, I mean, you can refer to them, obviously.
I just want to make sure I talk about the right things at the moment. So with regard to the Madison Community Plan Amendment, I appreciate everyone coming out and giving us a lot of good information and things to think about. One of the points that was raised, I think this is relevant to the Community Plan Amendment, was that changing this to Neighborhood Center makes sense because there is transit. And could I get that transit picture up again? I mean, I'm not a pro with this yet, but when I go to Google Maps, it says you can't get there from here on a bus. And they mentioned something about a circular route. So can you explain what the blue buses and the red buses are and how that relates between MTA and RTA? And where those routes go?
Yes, ma'am. So the red bus is RTA, these little red bus stops that we're seeing. So the primary transit provider, or the only transit provider, is MTA. So the primary transit provider, or the only transit provider, is MTA, which does circulate here. So it comes, the bus comes from Gallatin Pike, it travels sort of southeast on Neely's Bend, it does pick up this institutional area, then tracks back down along the schools, and then circles back up to the north and makes its way back up to the west, and then back to Gallatin Pike.
Gotcha. And then at that point, you transfer to an RTA bus to get to Nashville if that's where you were?
Yes, ma'am, or to another MTA route.
Okay. What other MTA routes run on Gallatin Road?
So there is this MTA route and an RTA route on Gallatin Road, but they also connect up along the north to cross the river and go into other parts of Madison, Donaldson, Hermitage, Old Hickory.
So you can transfer to buses that get you to other parts of Madison as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's helpful to understand how the transit works. And then, second, just to think through the density question, this may be a question for the developer. What is the bedroom count in these cottages? Are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom? Is it, can I pull them back up to get that?
Come on up. Yeah, to the microphone, please.
Yeah, those vary. The majority of them are two-bedroom setup. There's the possibility of even having a third bedroom.
Okay. And then, there was a question about on-street parking and guest parking. Are the streets wide enough to accommodate on-street parking, or absolutely not? Or what's the...
No, yeah, no, they were designed to accommodate on-street parking, really just to accommodate guest parking because we have ample parking to the rears of each of these units to meet the requirements as defined by Metro.
Gotcha. Okay, guest parking, though, could happen on the streets.
Yeah, and I would say there's additional off-street guest parking as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was the only question I had for the architect. That being said, having had the luxury of being the first one to speak, I'm going to listen to the rest of the commissioners before I make up my mind.
Commissioner Haynes.
I think I'm the only commissioner here who participated in the three-year Nashville Next process. That was a, as a commissioner. That was a very detailed, intensive process, collecting feedback from a lot of different neighborhoods. Having listened closely to that process, I think this is too dense. I think we need to maintain the character of this very special part of our city. I think 128 houses is plenty. I think this road is narrow. So at this point in time, I'm not going to support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I wasn't privileged to be commissioned during that Next, for Nashville Next, but I did, you know, there's a lot of work that went into it. I feel like I may have listened in on actually these as well. If you'll go back to the plan here again, I do, one thing that I do like what you guys did as far as actually incorporating it into the neighborhood better, you know, as many know, I don't like it when you have this dead end, one end way in, one way out, that you can't get onto Canton Pass and Apache Lane, because I think that does a better job of, you know, kind of incorporating a community within a community. But I agree, actually. I feel like it's just too dense for, like, you're all of a sudden, you're really changing the personality of a neighborhood, and, you know, 128 homes is still a lot of homes, which I think feels better for this area. I definitely support development in this area, and, you know, but I'm feeling the same way. I believe that I wouldn't support staff's recommendation, and I think that, I mean, it's only been three years, too. I feel like the neighborhood has put a lot of thought into this, and there was a lot went into Nashville Next for it, so that's, and that's all three of them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes.
Jeff Haynes and I are going to agree again, which is so weird. As many may know, I participated in Nashville Next as my family could not stop going to the meetings, and we live in White's Creek, so I have attended. We looked in Neely's Bend, and I wanted to live there, and honestly, the traffic on Neely's Bend Road was the reason we did not move to Neely's Bend, the existing traffic. I could not imagine driving down that road and having to get my kids to school and back and all the other things. So I cannot support a change in this policy. I think this was industrial before, but times have changed, and even then, there were less people working there as a working site than there would be living there now based on this plan. And my question to the staff is around the policy change. Again, it only applies to the, they have amended it to only apply to the five acres, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, because I know, we talked about that, but it took me a minute to get my head there. So how does that, if we don't change the policy, how does that impact the zoning request and the following PUD cancellation? It doesn't impact that.
Right, so the proposed SP, the single-family residential portion, is compliant with the special policy and the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. So what they're proposing would be supported by the existing policy on approximately 28 acres, so sort of this portion that you're seeing of the project boundary. It achieves multiple design principles and recommendations of that policy, specifically incorporating open space into their design, protecting natural environmental features on the site, enhancing vehicular and pedestrian connectivity, and maintaining the development pattern and the density of the surrounding neighborhoods. So when we talk about density and maintaining that character, we already see a variety of housing types and densities in the surrounding area. Here, there are townhome developments, these are duplexes. Here, you can barely see those building footprints. This is multifamily building that has been converted into condominiums, and then just to the southeast of that property, we see more duplexes. So there is a moderate-density development pattern that already exists.
But based on Nashville Next and all of the comments we've received and the traffic, and the fact that this is Neighborhood Maintenance, that's the disagreement, that's the determination that's been made. I think the policy, as far as the request to change the policy, at this point, we're only going to talk about number one. That's, I mean, I can't support it.
Commissioner Gobler.
I have a lot of respect for the more senior members of the commission, and I do appreciate where they're coming from. I do understand where staff is on this, and I, you know, I think developing these kinds of centers with these kind of efforts on unique pieces of property where, you know, development happened all around it 30 or 40 years ago. So I do understand it, but I can probably go with the rest of the commission on this as well, so that's where I am.
Commissioner Haynes.
So just looking at the purple area, and I'm trying not to think about the rest of it because I know that, you know, it's allowed by the existing policy. So the way I'm thinking of it is that it doesn't seem like two miles is too far in a suburban area to be away from amenities like grocery stores and things like that, especially in T3 suburban area. So that is strictly why I don't support the policy amendment. I think it should stay Neighborhood Maintenance because I think the character on the street is what, you know, most of us will see anyway as we drive down Neely's Bend. So that's why I will go ahead and make a motion to disapprove, or, how do you say that, disapprove staff's recommendation for policy change.
Yes, a motion to disapprove. It's a proper motion and a proper second. Any other discussion? This is on 1A. All in favor of disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and 1A is disapproved. Now, we are on 1B and 1C that are really tied to 1A, so it would probably be logical to defer those until the community comes together and figures that out. And I think, so would there be a motion to...
Can I ask one question about the PUD cancellation?
Yeah.
Does that necessarily hinge on the community plan changing or not? I mean, to me, if I were a neighbor and there were an industrial PUD next to me, and the opportunity to make it not be an industrial PUD came up...
I think that there would, I mean, that's a very good question. I think that a deferral will allow us to look at that, but just canceling a PUD with no direction, I think, would be not a good planning process. Anyway, this, a deferral would allow the staff and the community to discuss, because this is a large, open space now, and it probably will be developed, and so something is going to come our way again on this, and so we need a motion on 1B.
Should we defer how many meetings?
Probably indefinitely. Yeah, I think either, I think an indefinite deferral would be in order here.
Okay, so I'll move that we defer indefinitely.
So on 1B, a motion to defer indefinitely is a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and seeing no other discussion. We're on 1C. Is there another motion?
Motion, we defer indefinitely.
Motion, proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and that item is deferred indefinitely. We are now on items two. Oh, hold on one second, Commissioner. Hold on one second. Let's do this real quick. So 2A and 2B, it's been requested to defer those by the applicant, so, to October 12th?
Yes.
Is there a motion to defer?
So move.
Motion. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, to defer both items A and B. And then why don't we take a quick break, and then we'll come back and consider item four.
Great. How are you doing?
Since we're all volunteers, it was very helpful. Thank you. Are we ready?
We're ready.
Let's do item number, let's make sure, four.
Item number four is a zone change request for the livery at Fifth and Monroe SP. The request is to permit a mixed-use development. The property is highlighted in red. This is at the southwest corner of Fifth Avenue North and Monroe, Monroe Avenue in Germantown. The site is located at 1235 Fifth Avenue North. This is located in the Germantown Historic Preservation Overlay District and the Phillips-Jackson Street Redevelopment District. The site is approximately .19 acres. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning is MUN. The policy is T4 Urban Mixed-Use Neighborhood. This policy is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban mixed-use neighborhoods with a development pattern that contains a variety of housing, along with mixtures of uses such as commercial, institutional, and even light industrial development. Planning Commissioners, the site we're talking about tonight is circled in red here. There's a lot of colors up on the screen right now, but that talks about existing land use in the area. If you take a look, if you go south on Fifth Avenue North here, you'll see a single-family residential and two-family residential, multi-family residential across the street on Fifth, and light industrial zoned IR to the northeast. Again, single-family residential north across Monroe Street, and then industrial zoned retail going west along Monroe Street. Before you, the proposed site plan, the site plan would permit up to a maximum of 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The property, again, has frontage on Fifth Avenue and Monroe Street. Vehicular access is limited to the alley, to the west property line here. Parking is proposed to be off-site per the parking study. Valley services will be used for the proposed uses, and details for parking are proposed to be submitted with the final site plan. As you know, in Germantown, there's some traditional brick sidewalks. These sidewalks here along Fifth and Monroe are eight feet in width. The Major and Collector's Street Plan does call for an eight-foot sidewalk and a four-foot planting strip along Fifth Avenue. However, the applicant has worked with staff to maintain the existing brick sidewalks and not having a grass strip, but dedicating the right-of-way, so it does meet the Major and Collector's Street Plan requirements. The permitted uses requested would be for banquet, meeting, and event space, also a maximum of five residential uses. All other uses allowed in MUN zoning, which is the existing zoning, would be allowed except the three identified on the screen here. Alternative financial services, rehabilitation services, and beer and cigarette markets. Those would be prohibited uses. Before you, is an elevation of the proposed building. This would be the elevation along Fifth Avenue. This would be the elevation along Monroe Street. The plan identifies that the event space uses will be located on the first and second floor of the building, and bar restaurant use would be located in the basement. The building is limited to three stories and 45 feet. This was, the proposed building was approved by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission in May of 2014. Any alterations to the design of the building would need to go back to the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. When staff reviewed the policy, we reviewed that the policy does support a mixture of uses in this area. The policy emphasizes quality of life of the existing residential neighborhood, and the mixture of uses that are acceptable, I'm sorry, that are expected to enhance the neighborhood. Therefore, when we took a look at this proposed SP, we wanted to balance the residential component with the proposed uses. Therefore, conditions in the staff report identify limitation of hours and operations, working with the applicant to develop a urban design for, a quality urban design about the building and the pedestrian environment. Parking conditions are identified in the staff report, limiting occupancy for events and amplified sound limitations. This plan is consistent with the goals of the T4 Mixed-Use Neighborhood Policy. The proposed mixed-use building will serve the existing mixture of uses along Monroe Street and within the Germantown area. The proposed building has been reviewed and approved for massing and design by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission and MDHA. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you very much, and we'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant will have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for your rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Deputy Director Lehman, members of the commission. I'm David Kleinfeldter with the applicant. Also, Mr. Jim Creason is the applicant. He will also speak on behalf of the applicant. I think he has some other team members here, but only the two of us will be speaking as the applicant. That was an excellent presentation by the staff. We've worked with them very closely, and I don't have a whole lot to add. There is some opposition, so I do want to make sure we cover some issues. As the staff noted, the SP is completely consistent with the adopted Community Character Plan. The building placement, design, uses are all consistent with the urban mixed-use policy, and it's even been approved, of course, by the Historic Commission for the massing and the design and everything. In fact, you know, one thing to keep in mind, it's very important, I think, that this is on a corner. That's why you would have this kind of a building that's traditional. We asked them slides, I don't think we'll show them, but you know how these types of grocery stores and those types of buildings are traditionally on the corners in this type of a mixed-use neighborhood. This isn't a request for commercial on a suburban residential street. It's very different than the first one you've heard today. This is what an urban area is. It's homes and businesses all mixed together. The zoning does really two things. There is a change. It's an increase in the overall permitted non-residential square footage. And there's also some restrictions that are being added, so that's in exchange for adding the commercial that the staff has applied and the owner's agreeing to certain conditions. We're aware of, and we know there's concerns among the community, and Mr. Creason will talk about the times that they've met, which has been very many times. And we met, frankly, we've talked with staff, that you've seen this one's been deferred. I don't know if you're getting many deferred that many times. It's been deferred a lot because we've worked with staff, and they've really held our feet to the fire. So what is the change? Current zoning's MUN. All of the property, as you saw, what the uses were, and includes all of the houses that are shown as single-family. They are single-family, but they're zoned for mixed use, so they can be put to any of the uses that are currently permitted under mixed-use zoning today. Everything that is about this building is approved, is allowed under MUN. All of this individual things are... All of those individual things are allowed, the restaurant, the event space, the size of the building, that's all allowed. The change is that instead of, in this building, you could build 5,000 square feet today of non-residential uses, and under MUN, then you can sort of fill out the building, if you will, with residential. So that's what you could do today under MUN, with no restrictions on the commercial uses. And they've pulled a permit, in fact, for the MUN, that was administratively some problems, but the permit has been pulled for this building, meeting the historic to allow it to be built as MUN with these uses, including the rooftop uses and all the commercial uses that are proposed. But again, not the same amount. I'm not trying to say there's not a change, there is a change. And one thing that's also important, and you may hear, is that the MUN, this should stay as a mixed-use parcel. MUN does not require, and I'm sure staff would agree, that it doesn't require each parcel to have a mixture of uses. It requires, it allows a mixture of uses of different parcels throughout the area. With respect to the restrictions, as I said, staff has worked and included a lot of conditions, really do want to compliment them, because I think they've gone above and beyond the call of duty, lots of time put into this, especially considering their workload. The conditions are listed in your staff report, and again, the SP is consistent with the area, because the uses are allowed, even probably without these conditions. But again, we're cognizant of the neighbors' concerns and want to recognize those, so the owner's happily agreeing to these controls and conditions. Some of those are that the event space, which is one of the proposed uses, will be closed at 11:00 PM except for six special events per year, one of those, of course, would be New Year's. And then there's sound limitations that exceed the ones that are currently in the code. There's 40 decibels between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, which is different than what the code requires. Windows on the non-residential uses have to be closed from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM to prevent other noises getting out. And then there's the parking conditions that have been added, very specific parking conditions in this build with how many spaces, which is a little unusual, I think, for zoning. Typically, the parking is added at the time when you pull your permit. So that's all been done, we've met with, we've talked with Public Works, and we're meeting that condition for 85 parking spaces that will be provided through either valet and/or off-site. Mr. Creason will mention the meetings he's had with the Neighborhood Association. I do want to note that Councilman O'Connell, I don't think he typically comes and sort of weighs in, he knows he can do it at council, but he will, he asked, and we will, meet with Mr. Brian Fitzpatrick, who's a neighbor, who's had concerns, who couldn't be here today. A representative of Mr. Creason's going to meet with him and with, sorry, I've known Freddie, Mr. O'Connell, between the commission meeting and whenever the public hearing would be held at the council. So we would ask that SP, we would remind you, or I guess, reflect what staff said. The SP is consistent with the urban mixed-use policy. This exact building can be built under MUN, so what we're talking about is increasing the uses and then adding those restrictions as part of that. We ask that you approve this as it was recommended by staff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for listening to our application today. Planning, Letitia, Lucy, Bob, and Doug Sloan, who we've all met with, appreciate the amount of time you've invested in this request. You certainly have gone over and above. My name is Jim Creason, I'm president of Trust Development. I live just down the street on Fifth Avenue North, here in Germantown, Salem Town area. I have invested quite a bit of time since 2005 in the development of residential properties and commercial property already in the area. Approximately 32 residences have been sold under my brand, and I'm very invested in this area and care deeply about it. I have a historic preservation background, I've enjoyed being a member of this community, I have a track record of listening to neighbors, meeting with residents, meeting with the associations. I've met on this project approximately 14 times, with various sizes, with various objectives in terms of making sure that I did spend the amount of time necessary in order to hear the concerns that were raised, given the importance that Germantown obviously has to Nashville as an area of the city, and the historic importance that it plays in the Nashville proper. So it's important, I think, that I do let the commission know that in the neighborhood, I have, within a five-block radius, I've been involved in the development of three corners that were zoned mixed-use, and had the opportunity to develop within those three corners approximately 30,000 square feet of commercial space, and I forego, had foregone 100% of that 30,000 square feet in favor of residential development in its entirety. So I think I, again, have a track record of being mindful of uses within this specific area, and I'm very proud of the fact that I've been and played a part in the amount of residential square feet in lieu of commercial square feet that I've developed in the area. My most recent project that I completed in December is a boutique hotel called the Germantown Inn, where we invested approximately $1 million and a half in the complete renovation, in addition to 1,860 residents that is on Sixth Avenue North at 1218 Sixth Avenue North. Very proud of that project and the contribution that we, as a team, made to the Germantown area. With that said, I would like to thank those that are here today that will speak in opposition to this project. I've learned quite a bit from my interaction with them, and I always learn a lot from the process, and I'm very respectful of the fact that we just have a healthy agreement to disagree on certain elements of this. Lastly, I want to thank those that are here today to speak on my behalf in support of the project. This has been deferred, as David mentioned, on several times, and even some of my members of my development team are not able to be here today because of vacation schedules. So with that, I would respectfully request that you approve this in alignment with staff recommendations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You'll have about 30 seconds for rebuttal. Lucy, let's keep track of that. Anyone here wishing to speak in support? Yeah, would come up, and just remember, you've got two minutes to speak, and please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi there, Robbie King, 2013 B Castleman Drive, which is at Green Hills, not in Germantown. My wife, Kristen, and I are the owners of the prospective event space, would be a tenant, so not part of the development team with Jim. Mostly, I wanted to direct my comments to residents of the neighborhood who might be against this currently, and let them know that we are committed to being good neighbors, should this be allowed to go through. I hope that's been demonstrated by us attending several of the neighborhood meetings and making some changes to our business plan to accommodate requests that the neighbors had made. So although I don't live in the neighborhood, I do want to voice my support. Thank you.
I'm Janice Seals, I live at 1216 Fifth Avenue North, a half a block from the proposed development. I started out in opposition to this, but the more I heard about the project, the conditions, Jim's willingness to work with the neighborhood, what we might have if we don't have this development, I changed my mind. I've lived in this neighborhood for 18 years, I intend to live there, I hope, another 18 years. I'm not going anywhere. I've worked really hard on this neighborhood. I've been a part of the Neighborhood Association, I've picked up trash, I've cleared brush off vacant lots, I have a lot of time, energy, and sweat invested in this neighborhood. I'm not about to support something that I think would be detrimental. I have come to the conclusion that this would be a good addition to the neighborhood. It brings a different, it brings a different thing than what we have. I would much rather see this than a big restaurant. I think an event space that's used three times a week rather than a building that's used every night brings less traffic, and that's a big concern, traffic and parking. It's always a big concern. But I've worked through my concerns, and I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Campo, I live at 312 Van Buren Street, and I'm here to support this project. I'm excited to live in Germantown, all the restaurants and walkability of this town in the neighborhood is amazing, and I think that an event space where we can have, you know, live acts, entertainment, is exactly what we need in the neighborhood, so I'm excited to see this hopefully come to life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Roach, I live at 600 Garfield Street. I have been a fan of this since it was proposed. I think it's a very good design, I think it will benefit that corner, it'll bring something new to Germantown. I've known Jim Creason for years, he is a believer in that neighborhood, he's a believer in the residents of that neighborhood. He takes, he goes to great strides to make sure everybody is happy, gets along, he listens to all concerns, and he addresses them. I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you. God, just two minutes, I don't know. Michael King, 1235 Sixth Avenue North, also 1217 Fifth Avenue, I own Monell's Restaurant. I want to support Jim. He has done an amazing job, and being a business owner, you're a little concerned on what goes in. This is an incredible project. I'd rather have this than a bar that stays open till 3:00 AM. I think some of the oppositions I have heard, I don't understand, because quite frankly, I don't want a bar next to my windows. Now, I also just recently purchased the house that is going to be right next to this, and I would not have bought that had I worried about what it is. I'd rather have an event space, a $2.5 million project that looks beautiful, that will take away that stress in that corner, that area, and I think what he has done and what he has done for the community is really good. So I would support you, or support him, on passing this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King.
Good evening, Phil Hyde, 1218 Sixth Avenue North. I just wanted to let you know, I've been following this for over the last year, fully support this plan, and encourage you to approve the request to rezone to SP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Lauren Lagarde, I live at 515 Madison Street. I am in support of this project because Jim has developed, like he mentioned, an inn in Germantown, and he took a building that was previously derelict and has turned it into the most charming property on Sixth. It's a little six-room inn, and I know that he really cares, as he's mentioned, and the people that have stood up here before have mentioned about the neighborhood, and I have no doubts that the property that gets developed that we're talking about tonight is going to be an amazing addition to the community. I mean, Jim really cares, and I think you guys should approve this, the amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If you'd line up, and remember, you have two minutes, and state your name and your address.
Okay, I'm Shannon Earl, I live at 1236 Fifth Avenue North, which is directly across the street from this development. When we bought there, the thing that's appealing about Germantown is the combination of charming neighborhood and vibrant development, and that's what makes it appealing. And we don't really oppose this idea of this concept, we oppose the zoning change, because when we bought, we were worried about that property, and we were assured, but the zone, the neighborhood has been careful about the zoning, and it's to protect your house and all of that, so it has to have a residential component, and so we thought, okay, that's great. And now we stand to lose our entire rooftop terrace, because there will always be, almost always be, basically, a party going on across the street. So it's like losing a floor of your house. So if it were across the street from your house, as close to you as I am, I think you would understand why that's the concern. It's not the building, we think it's beautiful, it's not having an event space, we think that's nice, it's the idea of a rooftop, and no residential component to keep that in check from those of us who are residents literally right across the street. I wanted to point out, too, when she said those were multifamily homes, we're all single-family homes except for one unit, so that's not quite factual. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Heather, my name's Heather Edwards, and I live at 1400 Roselle Parks Boulevard, and I've lived there for 13 years, and I own three properties in Germantown. And I love my neighborhood and my neighbors, and so this issue is really important to me. I do want to start by saying thank you for the efforts that you've made in trying to address some of the concerns that the neighbors have been having by setting some conditions for the proposed SP zone change. We really do appreciate that. But many of us are really still concerned on how this, the conditions are going to be enforceable, and there are still some other issues that are affected by the zone change that are not addressed by these conditions, and because of that, we request that you keep it MUN zoning. When looking at this, you can't deny that there, the opposition for this project, far, changing the zoning far outweighs the support. I'd like to start with Fifth Avenue. This is Fifth Avenue, this is Monroe Street, and this is the livery. We looked at everybody who wrote into the Planning Commission that lives on this block of Fifth Avenue, and the people in opposition are in green, and the people who are for it are in pink. That's 12 opposed, four in favor, and one of the people in favor are the one who sold the garden section of his lot to the developer. So you can see, that's three-fourths of the people who wrote in on the street alone are opposed to this zoning change. But it's not just there. So many people wrote into the Neighborhood Association, 57, 40 of them opposed, 17 were in favor, and so that's more than a two-to-one margin of people writing in and saying, please don't do this. And then there are all the people who wrote to the Planning Commission, and, I mean, we printed out that all the people in opposition, and the staff was that big, I mean, you know, it's, there's a lot of people, and there's many reasons, which you'll hear that, for that. So we request that you please consider that our voices matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rob Williams, I live at 1319 Fourth Avenue North. I've lived in Germantown for 16 years, and I served as the president of the HGN Board back when it was a quiet little residential area. I oppose this application. You'll hear from many of my neighbors, but I wanted to talk to you about one neighbor that's not here, friend of mine, and our city councilperson, Freddie O'Connell. In June, Freddie sent his constituent an email declaring his position on the project. He said, "My personal preference is to keep base zoning intact, as the building will be the same regardless." So Freddie's position is important, A, because he's a neighbor, he's also our representative on the Metro Council, and because it brings up the reason why the staff report is in error. The staff report gave only one affirmative justification, because it would support infill development. Well, this application doesn't affect the building, we like the look of the building, it affects what goes on inside the building, whether it's residential or not residential. Last night, over email, I went back and forth with Freddie again, he told me he prefers MUN because of the inclusion of the residential, makes a better project for the corner. So this application actually undermines infill development by allowing the developer to eliminate 5,000 square feet of residential space. This application is contrary to Metro's goal of increasing residential density. There is no balance for residential. This does not benefit my neighborhood, it benefits the developer, and I appreciate your time, and please deny this.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Anne Marie Powell, and I live at 1214 Fifth Avenue North. Thank you for listening to us. As I previously stated, I live in the middle of the 1200 block of Fifth Avenue North, I live there with. That was.
We messed up.
Yeah.
We'll give you a whole two minutes. All right, here we go.
Worked out. I live there with my husband and our nine-year-old son. I love our block, I truly do, and am so proud to call it home. And I consider our block to be one of the most charming in all of Nashville, although I know that I am biased. I've lived there for 11 years, I hope to live there for the rest of I hope to live there for the rest of my life, and, you know, just to say that our, we don't plan to have, even if we are mixed-use zoning, we're just the three of us and our dog, and now our cat, so we're not planning on starting a business. I love the unique mix of residences and business. I have lived in the Nashville area for 47 years, and I did not know of another neighborhood in Nashville where the balance of homes and businesses works so well. Others have, and will explain why the proposed rezoning will threaten the charm and appeal of our neighborhood. The issue I'm here to speak on is the bad precedent that will be created if the current MUN zoning is lifted. We have heard that the zoning will be lifted just this once for Mr. Creason's project. It's my understanding that then some changes are going to be made where the zoning will not, where the historic board will not be allowed to, to, you know, where projects will not be allowed to lift that zoning. But I don't understand why change the zoning even once. I personally cannot think of a single reason why we need the Sloan or any venue like this. It's, Germantown is growing and even booming with the current mixed-use zoning. We have the Sound Stadium. A lot of people don't, you know, think about that practically at our back door. Who, it just seems that this just benefits the developer, and I just think that if we allow lifting of the mixed-use zoning this time, another developer is going to ask again, and we will be setting a bad precedent. Once you let one developer do this, every lot on the block will be up for bid. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Matt Butler. I live at 1220... She has something to say, I think. I live at 1220 Fifth Avenue North with my wife and my two children, and this is our neighbor Hannah here. We've lived there for 15 years, and I agree with, with our neighbors. It is a, is quite a beautiful and quaint street. I'm opposed to the rezoning to the SP for the livery for many reasons. One of the reasons is, is the present analysis on the parking and traffic in this area. There's, there's so much construction going on, huge developments that have already been approved, some are under construction now, some aren't fully operational. We've got this whole area here, 245 units under construction, restaurants, natural glasses for sale, hotel, office space, grocery store. There's just so many things that are going in, you can't even imagine how inundated we are with traffic. We have no idea the impact that those developments will have in terms of traffic flow, congestion, that kind of stuff. Before we actually even considered the livery coming, and the occupancy of this building is for 333 people. There's an event space actually just a couple blocks away, and I think the success of that event space is because they cap it at 100 people, and they actually have, drumroll, a parking lot. My biggest opposition is there's no plan for parking, and that's why it's been deferred so many times. So thank you for your time, and I definitely oppose this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak about a neighborhood that I love very dearly. My name is Ashley Butler. I live at 1220 Fifth Avenue North, where I've chosen to raise my children. Our street is arguably the most quaint and desirable address in all of downtown Nashville. So I'm asking why we're going to alter a zoning ordinance that's worked so well, not just for the residents that call at home, but for the businesses that are thriving under present MUN zoning. One of the reasons I'm opposed is that, under the present MUN, the developer can still have the same building, and the Sloan can still operate, but with half the square footage, which would equal half the noise, half the people, half the traffic. At a historic Germantown meeting where the Kings presented their plan for their event space, a board member specifically asked Ms. King if she could operate under the present MUN zoning, and she said she could. So my question is, why double that space? Look at our street. Every single lot that is available to be lived, inhabited in, while some do have businesses, there are residences involved, and it's worked very well. We believe that keeping the MUN intact would keep the present integrity of the 1200 block of Fifth Avenue, not to mention how altering it to allow for a party event space with an open rooftop will affect the residences on the street. I was a part of three different meetings trying to negotiate neighborhood concerns into the SP contract, and the moderator for our meeting asked for every point of the discussion that we went over to list a goal. For every one of those points of discussion, the neighborhood representatives said their goals were things like safety, noise, traffic, congestion, all of that stuff. And then every single goal of the developers' representatives was to protect the investment of the owners and the tenants every single time. And in my opinion, this isn't protecting the integrity of our neighborhood. So again, I beg you not to approve the rezone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Miles Butler, and I live at 1220 Fifth Avenue North. My sister and I have bedrooms that face Fifth Avenue and are less than 200 feet away from the event space. We already have enough trouble falling asleep with all the noise on Fifth Avenue as it is, and we can't imagine how hard it's going to be to get some sleep with 300-plus people parting right outside our windows until 11 o'clock at night. Plus, where's everybody gonna park? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Blake Chaffin. I live at 1400 Rosa L. Parks Boulevard, which is the Worthen Moss Development. I also happen to own an event business called Nashville Event Lighting, and I have my warehouse at Taylor Place. It's 100 Taylor Place. Since I was 18 years old, I've been a DJ, and I've done lighting at events. I have my 10,000 hours in. Been doing it 21 years. I want to speak to two things, the noise and, and the footprint of an event. So what happens when you actually have a decibel meter, and you're a DJ, and the event planner or the venue people are actually measuring the decibels? You might have playback of the music at a certain decibel level, but it's nearly impossible to control the noise of a crowd, especially maybe a crowd that's drinking, and a lot of times the noise comes from them yelling at the DJ to turn it up. So there's, there's issues for me with, with the rooftop terrace, specifically in the noise of that in the neighborhood. Additionally, my, my company owns box trucks. When an event goes on, it's not just over at 11 o'clock and boom, the people are magically gone, even as the people get their cars and leave and all that kind of stuff. Rental company, cake, caterers, lighting companies, cases, 26-foot box trucks, tables, chairs, linens, all coming in and out. So I love walking around my neighborhood. I benefit and profit over hundreds of events of a year with my company. I make profits off these events. But I would just like to walk around and enjoy the neighborhood, and so I oppose the rooftop terrace, and I'd ask you to consider, in addition to parking, all the other vendors and resources it takes to put on an event in a 10,000-square-foot facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Scott Vaughn. I live at 1224 Fifth Avenue North, 75 feet across the street from the, from the project, proposed project. I want to speak today about enforcement and penalties. I mean, we appreciate you guys, the staff, adding additional conditions based on the neighborhood input, but, you know, Germantown has an enforcement problem as it is with illegal parking, valets operating outside of their permit. Fifth and Taylor being an example, they've taken over, the valets there have taken over more space than they've been allowed by the city, and the city will not do anything about it. They also load and unload in the middle of Fifth Avenue North, and I personally have almost hit someone that's jumped out of an Uber into my lane. I had to swerve to miss them. So, you know, Germantown's very tight-knit communities, very dense, and we don't feel like, you know, $150 fines or these type of, you know, penalties that are being proposed or attached to the SP are high enough to make any difference. I mean, we feel like that's going to be, you know, become a cost of doing business, and then the neighbors are going to have to police this business and hope that the, you know, the, the city or the police will actually do something about it. You know, it puts the onus on neighbors, and we felt like it's just too much, too much to ask of neighbors. So we would appreciate it if you guys could disapprove the MUN to SP zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Irene Boit, and I live at 1213 Fifth Avenue North, which is basically right in the middle of the livery at one end and the other restaurants at the other end of my block. Again, I too appreciate the efforts that have been made to do something about the parking issues and to have the shuttle service, but I have concerns about how that is going to be reinforced for those who don't want to use the shuttles. And also, I really want to address the issue of parking. I happen to be probably one of the few people in Germantown that has only the public street to park on. I don't have my own parking space, and it really becomes kind of a nightmare to just keep going around the block and going around the block, hoping somebody's going to come out of a restaurant and move their car so I can get in. And this happens to me many times in the week. I also want to say that I have lived in Germantown for 36 years. I moved there in 1981, when across the street from me was nothing but a big lot filled with heavy construction machinery. So I want to say how much I do appreciate what has happened to Germantown since I moved there. I had no visionary, I guess, imagination to have seen what has developed, and I'm grateful for that. And I think we can have much from, from the livery, but I have a lot of concerns about what it's going to mean for parking. And with the new zoning, it would just mean that we have more people coming in, and it's going to be more issues around parking, and that's my huge concern.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Powell. I've lived at 1214 Fifth Avenue North for 18 years. That's half a block from this proposed development. Appreciate you all listening to those of us who live in the neighborhood and specifically on that block who will be impacted by this potential development. I'm here to talk to you about the noise that this will bring to our quiet street. Our house is one of many on the block with small children. The 11:00 p.m. compromise for the rooftop space seems like a reasonable cutoff as far as probably many people would imagine, but that would only be reasonable to anybody that doesn't have a small child. We have a nine-year-old son, and he goes to bed at 8:00, and his bedroom is on the front of the house, as are some of the other children in our neighborhood. And we're worried that the, that the music and the amplified music from the rooftop will make it difficult for him to sleep at night. The developer has put decibel limitations in the SP application with decibel meters being used to monitor the rooftop noise. With regard to the decibel meters, one of my friends, Tiffany Vaughn, emailed Jim Creason questioning how they would be implemented. This email was given to the planning commission prior to the June meeting. This email included many questions that have gone unanswered, and we would appreciate to know how the, how it's going to be enforced and what's going to happen if the, if there is an exceedance. Will the neighbors be notified, or will we have to appoint somebody to monitor? Basically, we enjoy our quiet street. We would like to keep it as such. We think mixed use is a better solution. Appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tiffany Vaughn, and I've lived at 1224 Fifth Avenue North, almost directly across the street from the livery for eight years. I have two children, a rambunctious four-year-old and a six-month-old, and I'm opposed. First, a huge thank you to the office for setting the conditions that were able to protect us more than prior. Many of my neighbors have outlined reasons why they're opposed to the zoning change, and many more neighbors were unable to attend due to vacation and work schedules. So I guess the bottom line is, what do we want? Number one, we want this building to remain MUN. This works, especially on our block. If you can't vote for that, we would like it to adhere to the updated historic guidelines. We are less than a week away from updating them. We would like a ban on the rooftop for commercial purposes. If you can't see to do that, we would like the time lowered to 9:00 p.m. to respect those families that do live on the block and are going to have the noise coming in our children's windows. We would like it to only be open till 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. It's too hard to count how many times a year they're open late and police that. And the penalties need to be raised to an amount that would actually hurt the business and spelled out how things such as a decibel meter are going to work before this is actually approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert James. Jim Murphy and I represent Professor Brian Fitzpatrick, who couldn't be here today. Neither could Jim. I just want to draw your attention just to one point, and that's that the applicant has said that each individual use of the livery would be permitted under the current zoning, and I want to challenge that with regard to the rooftop. We've already heard a lot of opposition to use of the rooftop for things like live performances, entertainment, and I think that with regard to that particular use, that would fall under outdoor commercial amusement under the zoning code, and that's Section 1704060B. And I'll just read that definition in relevant part. Outside, outside commercial amusement means the provision of entertainment to the general public for a fee where any portion of the activity takes place outside the building. It's any portion of the activity takes place outside of a building. And obviously, the Roof Act, we would argue, is outside the building. You have a fee being paid. You have provision of entertainment to the general public. I think that it meets all the requirements of the definition. It's important to note that that particular use in MUN zoning is not permitted. Inside commercial amusement is permitted. Outside commercial amusement is not permitted in MUN. And, I mean, I think the reasons why that would be the case are pretty obvious, given the disturbance to neighbors who have residences there. So with that in mind, if it's not permitted under the property's MUN zoning today, we also don't think it should be permitted under the SP, and I would encourage the commission to consider this and disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, you have 30 seconds for a battle. Let's get, hold on, let's get your 30 seconds.
I can't start until the clock starts.
No. You know this, Mr.
I'll stop at 30.
Oh, there we go.
Unequivocally, we'll not be doing commercial amusement. We will not be having band concerts or anything like that. This is banquet space. This is like when you have a wedding reception, and, and we don't tip, I don't think they're going to charge the attendees for the weddings for that. The property, you know that massing is appropriate at that corner. You've heard a lot of things about sound, which is very much why the conditions are included on sound. The rooftop is going to be used. Permit's been pulled for MUN. The property is going to be used for those types of uses. The question really is the thing you didn't hear too much opposition to, and that was the issue of the lower floor, whether it's residential or restaurant. And that, so we ask you to approve this because all the uses are permitted.
Thank you. Saying no, and else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and how about we start with Commissioner Haggen? Do you want to go first?
Where to start? First of all, we've had seven deferrals, so it's time to hear this and make a decision. I think I have a question around the, first of all, a lot of talk about the Metro historic commission change, and we have somebody on the board to talk about that, but was that something, does anyone can tell us what the change is going to be? Because I've read it in letters, and it looks like that rooftop will be prohibited under these new Metro historic guidelines, which I'm understanding are effective in like six days.
So we reached out to the Metro Historic Planning staff, and they have submitted comments for the record. They should be in your, in your packet.
Oh, I missed them.
From Robin Vigler. Those came in today. And so basically, if I could just read her comments into the record, that might, might help. This project, referring to the livery, received a preservation permit in January of this year based on the existing design guidelines. The permit was not issued in error, so we cannot rescind it. The MHZC does not review use, just design, so the rezoning of the property doesn't change the preservation permit that they already have. There is a plan to poten- There is a plan to potentially revise the design guidelines, but there is no guarantee that will be adopted next week or ever. In addition, there are likely to be changes between now and when it is adopted, if it is adopted. And of course, there is no way to know when those changes might be. Even so, we are obligated to honor the current permit that was issued based on the existing design guidelines. Any future alterations that they might request to the permit would need to meet the design guidelines in place at that time that it was requested. We tried to probe to better understand whether or not this would be changed under the proposed guidelines, and I think there was some reservation because they haven't been entertained by the commission yet. If that -- it's like that goes a long way to answering your question, but that's official response.
I think it's important to have in the record. It was brought up in the public hearing, and it was also when our comments submitted through the email, so I think it's important to --
Okay.
Well, so we found this was consistent with policy, to change from a mixed use to an SP with no residential. But when I read the policy, "Policy includes guidance to protect and enhance the residential portions of the area." And I am concerned about -- I live near the Fontanelle, and no one controls the decibel levels. No one enforces the parking. No one enforces. Now, if it's appropriate, let's talk about this in planning. Tell me if it's not. But enforcement is not our job, but it's a problem. So I've also lived in East Nashville where I've had to call my councilman when I had Councilman Jameson every night and yell at him as to why I could still hear something coming from downtown when it's not supposed to be played after 11:00 PM. I also agree that 11:00 PM event ending does not mean that the action ends. That's a huge issue. Not having a parking lot, huge issue. Big trucks, where are they going? In the alley. People parking on the street, huge issue. I honestly have to say, mixed use makes sense to me. I don't -- keeping the residential makes sense to me. I can't imagine living across the street from something like this and having a rooftop deck I want to use as my space for my home and then having, across the street, having a wedding on the roof. Is that available through the current zoning? Could they do that? I'm sorry, could you clarify? Could they have a wedding and a reception on the roof under the MUN?
So this one has been -- let me just step back and talk a little bit about the policy because, as you can tell from the number of deferrals we have really --
Struggled with this?
Struggled with this one, yeah. Because I think this is a mixed-use neighborhood, and we do support a variety of uses here. We don't look parcel by parcel and try to achieve, you know, a perfect mix, although I think MUN does support retail, residential, or office. So I think the policy instructs us to help promote a vital pedestrian mixed-use area. And so we started with a couple of questions that you're grappling with. How do you address parking? And so essentially, the code is a little vexing in terms of parking. Sometimes specific uses have a specific number of spaces. In this instance, for a special event-type space, the public works through a traffic study will determine the number of spaces because, as you said, there are variables that are very different. You could have a wedding banquet. You might have something else, and the parking profile could be different. And so Public Works reviewed the traffic study and basically determined the number of spaces that would be required based on the square footage and the number of events. It's my understanding that the applicant has a three-year agreement with a church for an off-site parking lot that is within 200 feet. And so that was the first threshold for me as I was trying to unpack this case of how you protect the residential component versus understanding the commercial needs. To your question about whether or not you could have a wedding or something on the roof, I think that is a code's determination. As was alluded to here, there is indoor and outdoor amusement. It was defined as such, I think that was read into the record. It's not a banquet space. And so I think there is some -- it's not that it's ambiguous, but that is a code determination about how that would be considered, and so I don't want to speak for them. But under MUN, you can have indoor amusement, and I would say that is the closest category to what is being proposed here, if that helps.
It does help.
Okay.
And then to the -- okay. I mean, I think the residential, I mean, pointing out from a lot of the comments and public comments, and I often say, beyond the fact that we had some pros and some cons speaking here, all of the comments I read that we received were in opposition to this. And they pointed out a lot of the things that were said here, and I know that this was something the staff struggled with. And I appreciate you guys taking the time and energy to walk through it on a regular and work with the developer on this. But I do think that the mixed use would not allow all of these uses, and I don't see honestly a need for an SP in the middle of -- in this residential neighborhood at this point. And I'm looking at my notes to make sure I don't have anything else. I probably will have some other questions because I think the question around enforcement and parking, traffic and noise, is a big deal. And as someone who's lived in neighborhoods, I can completely understand that, so I'm going to listen to everyone else.
Commissioner Gobel. I agree. I mean, how would this be enforced on the noise and closing times?
One thing that might help on that point, we were concerned, and I've consulted with the zoning administrator to better understand what are the requirements for a restaurant or for a bar or for any other use that you might have in MUN because we want to treat everyone fairly and have similar set of rules. Essentially, state law requires that if you have a beer license, you shut down at 3:00 -- I mean, 3:00 in the morning, 3:00 AM. And so I'm sure there are some other standards, but that one was to me. And so I think to the extent you've highlighted enforcement issues elsewhere, I don't doubt that. I think that it would be common, not just with this use or any others that you might have, especially where you have areas where you have residential and commercials areas intersecting.
Well, I live across the street from Printer's Alley, so I know well what closes down at 3:00 and how they tend to sing when they go home. Not very well either. But, you know, I mean, the value of SP is that you can put other conditions on these kinds of things that actually make it better for the neighborhood. And, you know, and noise is going to be an issue, and if you've got an event space that's -- it's my understanding that they could do half as much of the event space in this under present zoning.
Right.
They can have an event space. They could have half as much. You know, and so that's a -- but then who do you call, you know, at midnight when they won't shut up? And, you know, how many times do you do that when -- what are all the ramifications? So, you know, I've really got mixed emotions about this one. I certainly see the benefits from both sides. The neighborhood is a phenomenal neighborhood. I love Germantown. I wish I'd moved in when I could afford it. And, you know, and I think these kind of things, filling in these areas, is important. And I'm going to just listen to what the other commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Diaz.
I agree with everything everyone has said. I feel for the residents that live in this neighborhood, and I, you know, this neighborhood is very successful, and the zoning allows for various types of uses. And, you know, that could be, like they said, even if it's half the space, that half the space could be as loud as what could go there now. Or it could stay later, too, if, you know, if it was just a bar that stayed until 3:00 AM. But the beauty of an SP is that we could enforce, you know, we could have more enforcement. So I'm leaning towards maybe staff working on maybe more restrictions on the time to have something work with -- well, I know that you guys have gone back and forth a lot, and -- but I feel like in other event spaces in urban neighborhoods, I've seen that they are -- they close earlier than 11:00 PM. So that's just an idea. Maybe, I don't know if staff is willing to work with the applicant, but I just think that this neighborhood is that kind of neighborhood that you're just going to have those kind of mixed uses, and that's what this neighborhood is for. So I want everybody to be happy, but at the same time, we have to try to compromise. So that's where I stand.
Counsel lady.
Thank you. Appreciate all the good information that's come out and the apparent good back and forth that has already happened. This is a tough one. I mean, I've been through similar versions in my neighborhood where we had an event venue that had no parking, but it had the advantage of being in the middle of a park facing across a major street so that we knew we weren't going to -- we knew we weren't going to hear their noise. And the parking part has been difficult to enforce. I mean, in terms of saying you've got to provide off-street parking, it's great to have that contract in place, but we're, you know, we're now 10 years into it, so you have a three-year contract, and then what happens? I have a restaurant where they had a contract, and it didn't even make it a year. So I'm very concerned about not having any parking available, and I think that's a really valid point to have been made up. And then also, just, I mean, I appreciate the limits on how late and, quote, "There would only be six events that last" later. Who keeps track of that? I mean, does planning even have -- I mean, we've been through this in another part of town.
Can you -- it would become a code's enforcement issue.
To keep track of how many events they've had during the year?
No.
So, for example, if we say you can have six events that last after 11:00, who has that list?
The neighbors.
The neighbors.
Right. But codes would ultimately be the ones to enforce it.
When they have event number seven.
Right. And for parking issues, Public Works and codes probably take.
And then as far as the noise ordinance goes, I mean, there's a clear residential noise ordinance that says you can't have amplified music audible at the property line of a residential area. Does that apply in mixed use or not? I think this is Title 11, so maybe it's not fair to ask that. Anybody know? Maybe our legal counsel.
That's a good question.
Yes. So we have requirements in industrial and agricultural areas, and then 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then in all other districts. Those are the maximum sound levels. That's how the code.
Right. This is not that one. There's a separate one.
The noise ordinance is in Title 11, which I unfortunately don't have in front of me right now. But my understanding is that this SP is more restrictive than the Title 11 noise ordinance, if I understood correctly. So they afford --
That's 70 decimals.
No, it's audible at the property line, audible, which is like 60 decimals. I mean, that's what the noise ordinance says. You can't be audible at the property line.
Yes. Again, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, so I am --
Right.
I think --
Council members know that one.
I think that it does apply.
So it might. It might apply in mixed use.
I think. But again, without the ordinance in front of me, I don't want to give a 100% answer on that.
I think that's important to know. Another issue that was raised was the one of penalties. Can we increase the penalties to something more meaningful than the $50, and can you address that one?
Penalties are typically dealt with in the code, so different violations have different penalties. If it's a violation that the code's department enforces, those typically go to environmental court, whether that's use not permitted, whether that's violation of the noise ordinance. Those were limited by state law to $50 a day. The traffic and parking issue, for example, if I heard someone say something about valet, if that valet permit is given by, granted by the Traffic and Parking Commission, if someone violates that permit, that goes back to the Traffic and Parking Commission. I believe it's 12 -- somewhere in Title 12. I can't give you that code section, but somewhere in Title 12, that gives the Traffic and Parking Commission the penalties that they can apply. So different violations are set forth in the code or state law as to what we can do.
Right. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. And then can you help me understand what the SP is granting that's not already there from the MUN? Is there a limit on the square footage that they are able to go beyond, or is it simply the mix of residential and not residential?
So we probably laid out in more detail than we typically do on page 37 under the existing zoning because we anticipated this question. We don't normally go into so much detail under the mixed-use neighborhood. That basically, as has been previously noted, MUN basically is a mix of residential, retail, and office uses. So basically, there is a cap on the non-residential uses, FAR, in the code for non-residential uses. So under the existing zoning, they could get almost 5,000 square feet. So essentially, what the SP would allow is almost 10,000 square feet of non-residential space.
Right. Of which some of that could be converted to up to five residential.
And what I think has always been a little bit, not confusing, but if under the existing zoning, if 25% is residential, then you can have residential not counted as your FAR. So that's noted there. And so that's why I think we do agree with some of the assertions that the building envelope itself is likely to not be very different between the existing zoning and what's proposed. And we were comfortable with that element of this. So it really is just about the mixture of uses and the amount of non-residential uses that would be allowed in the SP.
Thank you. That's helpful. And, you know, and it sounds like there's pretty good consensus that the building envelope itself is not a problem. I mean, it's a good-looking building, and historic has approved it. I don't see that as an issue. It's disturbing to me to allow them to double the non-residential. If parking is an issue, 300 people in an area, noise is an issue. So I'm, just based on experience I've had with how event venues can interact with people trying to go to sleep at night, I'm going to continue to listen, but I'm nervous about this.
Commissioner.
Let me follow up on your parking question. Mr. Kleinfeldter, you have a three-year lease on parking. How long is the lease with the event operator?
I really don't know, actually. 10 years.
That answers my question. I can't support this. They've got a 10-year lease with an operator who's going to spend a ton of money. They got a three-year lease on parking. That makes no sense.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I agree that the existing zoning MUN should stay in effect, and with that, I make a motion to disapprove.
It's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I just have it. Disapproval. We are on item number six. Hold on. Hold on. So we, since it's a disapproval on the last one, we need to clarify why we disapproved it. And so from the person making the motion, I think a clarification would be good, Mr. Tibbs, on why we disapproved it. And probably you -- Doug usually says these things, but I could probably say that it was, it has to be against some policy or something like that, right, Bob?
Yeah. What I heard, I mean, staff recommended that it was consistent with policy, but what I heard the commission state was concerns about the scale and the lack of conditions that would deal with the impacts the project would have on the neighborhood. And so I think having that stated in the record, something to that effect would explain the reason for disapproval.
You might have to repeat some of that again, but yeah, I felt like, so do you want me to make a motion again, or just state for the record?
No, I don't think we need to make a motion, but like --
Just state for the record.
Yeah. The concern was why it didn't meet policy maybe or something.
Well, I definitely -- The proposal would have residential lots that vary from about 7,000 square feet in size to 17,000 square feet in size. In general, it's surrounded by one- and two-family residential uses to the northwest and south. Along that southeast side, though, there is a CSX railroad line. Building height is limited to three stories and 45 feet. As a reminder, for SP zoning districts, the intent for those zoning districts is to implement context-sensitive development and land use compatibility. It is intended to respect the existing character of the budding neighborhoods and the larger community in general. Nashville Next policy, which was put into place with a special policy in the area, seeks to protect the existing nature of the area while allowing appropriate infill. The rezoning to circumvent the Metro zoning code is in direct conflict with the adopted policy and the goals of Nashville Next. The proposed plan isn't within a neighborhood maintenance policy area. While single-family residential uses are appropriate, the special policy provides us guidelines of how infill development should be implemented. The rezoning to SP would allow for smaller residential lots and more lots than the Metro zoning code would allow and is inappropriate. The proposed plan has lots that range at roughly 7,100 square feet to 17,000 square feet. It does not provide for similar setbacks to the lots to the north and east of the site. It does not provide a transition in lot sizes from the smaller lots along the southwest to the larger lots to the east. It does not provide open space equal to cluster lot standards and does not meet the requirements for lot compatibility for subdivision regulations for neighborhood maintenance policies. The plan proposed does not provide a transition of lot sizes from the smaller lots to the west to the larger lots to the east, and the proposed plan does not provide open, is not supported by the T3 neighborhood maintenance policy or the special policy. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval. And as well, not all reviewing agencies have recommended approval. Stormwater has also still not approved this plan.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Welcome. You'll have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and your address.
My name's Mike Delvisus. I'm here representing the current property owners, which is Domas Partners LLC. We'd like to thank the Planning Commission for this opportunity, and also the staff and Letitia for the many discussions and her prompt responsiveness to our inquiries, and also to our neighbors for having the opportunity to discuss the project with them. And just quickly, those discussions have consisted of, when the notices went out, there were some residents that contacted us that we tried to promptly respond and meet with them on-site. And also, just to remind them, if any other neighbors had questions, to contact us. Do you recall perhaps that we did before at the July 13 meeting and had a good exchange and discussions out in the hallway? Hopefully, we didn't disturb you too much. And that was the start of answering questions, talking about the process again, and hopefully providing information that allevied their concerns with regards to some disinformation. So obviously, what we're here is to ask for you to approve our request for the SP. We did have a neighborhood meeting on July 20. The neighbors were in attendance, and some of our team members were attendants, and Councilman Pardue was in attendance. That was a good follow-up to the meeting we had in the hall. In our understanding, after that meeting, is there was momentum from the residents to support the SP. And likewise, an indication from Councilman Pardue at that point that he was inclined, based on the information and the input from the neighbors, to be in support of this request for an SP. I'm going to discuss that, and these are some of the points we made to the residents. But before I do that, we do understand a couple of the more consistent concerns that the residents have explained to us, and again, these were the more frequent ones, is with regards to connectivity. Don't connect on one side, or which side can we maybe not connect to Cumberland Hills, or maybe not connect to Val Marie with the road? And again, my understanding from the meeting we had with the neighbors is Councilman Pardue more or less was going to say, y'all get to make that decision on what connectivity is or what it is not, and that we would be obliged to your decision to proceed based on connectivity. And traffic, traffic is a pretty consistent comment. So why do we believe the SP is better than the cluster lot option? Because when we talk about the existing neighborhood, our existing neighborhood is our property, which is zoned R-20. So under that, we have that opportunity to do a cluster lot with 10,000-square-foot lots. So with the SP plan, when we talk about context-sensitive, when we looked at that, and Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering is here to perhaps help answer questions later if I'm not able to answer that for you, is that looking at the plan, part of what the context-sensitive was, okay, where do we start? Where we're going to start with, we have a use by right under the cluster to have 10,000 square-foot lots, so 10,000 square-foot lots around the perimeter of the existing neighbors is one way we could proceed. But that context-sensitive, by having the smaller lots transition out of the Val Marie area, having the cul-de-sacs with larger lots, and those, you can, I don't know if you can see it on your plan, but the cul-de-sacs, they average, when you're over at 42, nominally average 13,000 square-foot-plus lots. The cul-de-sac that's near Lot 33 has nominally 14,000 square-foot lots. And then when we get to the Hammerhead side, close to the north side, those are nominally 15,000 square-foot lots versus the 10,000. So in this particular design, there's fewer lots along the perimeter of the property. And also, by, instead of having an internal loop, we went to a cul-de-sac that the backyards widened out to more match the property lines that were in the existing neighborhood. And likewise with the SP, just like the cluster lot, there is the Type C landscape buffer that is being proposed as part of the project. The setbacks are the same as the cluster lot option, and a couple of things that we presented based on how the developers want to develop the property and build their homes is it's all single-family detached, that we're not pursuing a duplex type of lot with regards to this SP, which is, as you know, permitted under the cluster lot option. And then, of course, with regards to the conditions that the SP has, would be the architectural standards that would be included in the ordinance should it be approved as in SP. So again, back to the transition, we appreciate the comments with regards to a general policy, but again, how are we going to implement that policy of transition to our piece of property? Again, that was by trying to put the larger lots in the configuration we have adjacent to the existing properties. So that was the design flexibility that we thought did transition to the existing neighborhoods. And I know Letitia and the staff had a comment with regards to the open space. It was our understanding that we did meet the conditions. If there's some orientation or how the open space is oriented, that's an issue. I think that would easily be resolved during the development of the final plan. And it was likewise our understanding, we're not necessarily aware of what the comment would be from Stormwater. At the last meeting, the issue was the staff didn't get to, or the Stormwater staff did not get to the, update their report with regards to TDEX letter stating that we have wet weather conveyances on the site versus streams. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You'll have about two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone here wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
Support.
Anyone, let me ask again, anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Y'all come up, and you can line up. And just a reminder, y'all been here a long time. It's two minutes. State your name and your address, and try not to repeat yourselves. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for this time. I'm Stacy Farrell. I live at 217 Northside Drive on the north of this proposed development. The concern that I have more than anything else is this would fundamentally change our neighborhoods. They're unique, especially in Nashville. Nashville has plenty of gated communities. This is like a gated community with no gate, no wall, and acre lots. And there's a reason why. We went all the way out to the edge. We're only a quarter of a mile from the county line. We're a long way from downtown. But it's so unique because we don't have a density that is attractive to us. Our streets are all dead-end. There are three housing areas right up along Gallatin Road. One is Twin Hills Drive. This is Northside Drive, right on the north side of this. And then there's Cumberland Hills Drive, right to the north of that. All of them were designed to have one way in, a set of homes, and one way out. Northside Drive, 64 homes. Cumberland Hills Drive, 53 homes, acre lots. This adds 50 homes, but with one thing that wasn't considered in how it impacts our neighborhoods. They're going to go through our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods all connect to Gallatin Road individually, one way in, one way out. It provides us security. It limits traffic. Our children can go back and forth across the roads. This development says, I'm going to develop 50 homes and connect it with your neighborhood having 64 homes, almost doubling it. All this traffic goes right through our small residential street. That's how it's designed. We mow that acre of grass, year after year after year, to limit that very thing. If that had a connection straight to Gallatin Road, like the apartment complex to the north of us, then fine.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Carol England. I live at 2301 Marcia Drive. I speak on behalf of my fellow residents of the North Hills Estate, many of whom are here tonight. We are a neighborhood adjacent to the proposed Twin Hills development. We oppose that development as currently planned, especially the proposed roadway to connect to our neighborhood. Nearly every household in the North Hills Estate has signed a petition, which we've submitted to the commission, stating our opposition. Our concerns are safety, quality of life, property values, and preservation of neighborhood character. Concerning safety, the proposed connector would make our neighborhood a cut-through for Gallatin traffic and subject us to heavy through traffic from far beyond our neighborhood, creating a grave safety hazard. Our streets have no sidewalks, no shoulders, no lights. With the proposed roadway, our residents could no longer safely navigate the neighborhood. Our special needs child, families with strollers, children on bikes, joggers, and our many, many elderly residents would all be at risk. Our next concerns are for quality of life and property values. For more than 50 years, North Hills Estate has been characterized as safe, quiet, and desirable place to live. Unacceptable safety hazards and noise levels from the proposed connector would rob us of that identity, and our quality of life would diminish and our property values decrease. Finally, we seek the preservation of our neighborhood character. We're a neighborhood of older, mostly one-story brick homes on one-plus acre lots with large setbacks. The proposed Twin Hills development is two-story sited homes on quarter-acre or smaller lots. We ask, these neighborhoods are incongruent. We ask you to honor your commitment to preserve neighborhood character and disapprove this plan. Thank you.
I know it's late. I'll be brief. My name's Mark England. I live at 2301.
This adds 50 homes, but with one thing that wasn't considered in how it impacts our neighborhoods, they're going to go through our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods all connect to Gallatin Road individually, one way in, one way out. It provides us security, it limits traffic, our children can go back and forth across the roads. This development says, I'm going to develop 50 homes and connect it with your neighborhood having 64 homes, almost doubling it. All this traffic goes right through our small residential street. That's how it's designed. We mow that acre of, acre of grass, year after year after year, to limit that very thing. If, if that had a connection straight to Gallatin Road, like the apartment complex to the north of us, then fine.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Carol England. I live at 2301 Marcia Drive. I speak on behalf of my fellow residents of the North Hills Estate, many of whom are here tonight. We are a neighborhood adjacent to the proposed Twin Hills development. We oppose that development as currently a plan, especially the proposed roadway to connect to our neighborhood. Nearly every household in the North Hills Estate has signed a petition which we've submitted to the commission stating our opposition. Our concerns are safety, quality of life, property values, and preservation of neighborhood character. Concerning safety, the proposed connector would make our neighborhood a cut through for Gallatin traffic and subject us to heavy through traffic from far beyond our neighborhood, creating a grave safety hazard. Our streets have no sidewalks, no shoulders, no lights. With the proposed roadway, our residents could no longer safely navigate the neighborhood. Our special needs child, families with strollers, children on bikes, joggers, and our many, many elderly residents would all be at risk. Our next concerns are for quality of life and property values. For more than 50 years, North Hills Estate has been characterized as safe, quiet, and desirable place to live. Unacceptable safety hazards and noise levels from the proposed connector would rob us of that identity, and our quality of life would diminish and our property values decrease. Finally, we seek the preservation of our neighborhood character. We're a neighborhood of older, mostly one-story brick homes on one-plus acre lots with large setbacks. The proposed Twin Hills development is two-story sited halls, homes on quarter acre or smaller lots. We ask, these neighborhoods are incongruent, we ask you to honor your commitment to preserve neighborhood character and disapprove this plan. Thank you.
I know it's late, I'll be brief. My name's Mark England. I live at 2301 Marcia Drive, and I have two points. The first is, this development is between two existing neighborhoods, Val Marie and North Hills. The neighbors at Val Marie had a meeting with Doug Bardou. They were okay with it, not the neighbors at North Hills. I've been pounding the pavement, I've been to every house in the neighborhood. Out of 63 houses, I have 85 signatures on petitions that I sent to you earlier this week. Sorry about clogging your email. I have not spoken to one neighbor who was in favor of it. Out of the 85 that's signed, I had one lady who wanted to talk to her family first, and I'll get back to her. So I want to let you know the depth of feeling in the North Hills Estate. Do not connect to this new development. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Montmany, and I live at 401 Cumberland Hills Drive, and I would like to first of all, thank you all for this opportunity to speak. We had chosen our former home, we're, we're recent new residents to Nashville, which we're very proud to be. Both of our sons have moved to Nashville after college, and we recently, last year, found out we were going to be grandparents, so we wanted to be down here with our children. Our former home of 26 years, we picked that specifically and built that home, had a dead end street so we could have very low traffic and not have cars running around so our kids could play safely. We looked at various homes around Nashville and wanted to find a neighborhood that would be somewhere, and we chose this neighborhood for that reason, a dead end street, quiet neighborhood, and a great place that we could entertain our grandchildren to come over and visit with us. So we'd ask that we not have the connection done to our neighborhood so that we can continue and have a safe neighborhood for our, our children and for our fellow neighbors. And I thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I actually have a lot to say in two minutes, but I'll try to get it out. Just to address the meeting with the, the residents at Val, I'm sorry, I live at 2501 Val Marie Drive, I'm the, the, the large lot right in the cul-de-sac, which is not going to match any of those lots on the Riverside. Okay. First, the meeting that we had at Val Marie, I wasn't in attendance, but I do have more than 30 signed petition. I didn't know we had a place to submit a petition, but they all oppose the whole development period, along with the connection with the, our neighborhood. Like I said, that would punch right through, right in front of my house. We would like for you to disapprove the SP, leave it at whatever it is, but more importantly, not do the construction period. The builders, when they, when they finished our homes, the builders were messy, they left stuff all in the street to jump around a bit, I'm sorry. We don't have enough infrastructure for the roads. It's hilly, small, coming down Twin Hills, which is not on the map. The wildlife in this area is amazing. I have small deer, turkeys, fox, groundhogs, everything running through my backyard, down past the river. We have large lots that's coming into down Twin Hills, looks like on the north side, which I'm glad to see the neighbors on the other side, we need to get together soon. Also, we have mature trees. Point is, the SP will completely demolish the character of our neighborhood, and we ask you to continue to disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ivan Pint, 2517 Val Marie Drive. I just want to make one point. When I moved into the Val Marie enclave at Twin Hills eight years ago, we were told by the developer that this would be a dead end cul-de-sac community. And the plot plans that we saw showed cul-de-sacs at both ends. I understand there's a piece of property on the end of the cul-de-sac that is owned by the HOA. I think that was the intention of the original developer to protect that so it would stay a dead end community. I would ask that you disapprove this and disapprove the access from Twin, or the Val Marie Drive. In addition, the, the lots connecting to that area are very small, it would distract from our neighborhood as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Pine. I live at 2517 Val Marie Drive as well. I was a little upset when I heard about this meeting and how we agreed to all these things, ex nay on what he said, because that didn't happen. We're all, we don't want it, we don't want the breakthrough at all, or the enclave means a separate entity, so why would we name it, why would they have the enclave and then break through and go on, go on with the other neighborhoods? We love the new people in our neighborhood, but we don't want to meet them through the street, we'll drive around. We don't want it broke through. And I just wanted to say that, also, repeat what my husband said, the HOA, John, I call him John the Builder, it's not important. Anyway, the person that built our few homes when we moved in there, he made it so that part of the, the cul-de-sac that goes around, that's all, a whole big section of that belongs to the HOA, so I don't know how they're going to break through any, because we're not signing it away. And we just barely found this out when we did some digging our own. Surprise, nobody had told us that, but we found out. So anyway, please, please continue with your disapproval. We like it the way it is, we love our new neighbors, but we prefer that it didn't break through, it's just, there's all different kinds of reasons, but I know my, well, my time's up, but I'm going to go to somebody else. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Chris Weigle. I'm at 405 Cumberland Hills Drive, and it's, it's right next to this development, I'm right at the end of the development. I want to make two points, one of which is concerns, concerns of stormwater. I'm guessing one of the reasons, I haven't talked to anybody at stormwater, but I'm guessing one of the reasons that stormwater hadn't gotten back yet is because it's, it's, it's a mess. The stormwater actually flows through my backyard, I've got a creek through my backyard. And when it rains, there is a large amount of water, it actually cuts through the, the limestone rock down underneath the CSX train track and out to the river. So I would say there, there may be more to stormwater than just they haven't gotten to it yet. Secondly, what we've been told by Mr. Delvisis is if this, the SP is not approved, then, you know, what's going to happen is there's going to be 10,000 square foot lots and the, there will need to be duplex units. And, and it's, what I like to talk about is just the, the idea of permitted to do versus forced to do. So with the current zoning, permitted to have, you know, R20, so 20,000 square foot lots, I'm not, I don't know anything about cluster, but it sounds like, you know, it can get down to 10,000. But they don't have to do 10,000, they could do 20,000. They don't have to do duplexes, they could do all single-family dwellings with what it's currently allowed. So on behalf of me and my family, would certainly appreciate you guys disapproving.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Martha Fuentes. I live at 359 Cumberland Hills Drive. We moved here four years ago. I don't want to sound like I'm going over your head, but I prayed for this place and found this beautiful, quiet street. No streetlights, no sidewalks, dead end, it was my answer to prayer. Now, I believe in progress, that's fine, and then everyone live their own lives, but this, this just, this is going to change the whole spirit of our little road. We have, we have deer crossings, they're virtual, but the deer know where they are. We have, we have groundhogs and turkeys, and our, our life is just a very quiet one. And I would appreciate so much if you might give this very, very careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. It's actually a minute and 40 seconds. Fifty seconds, minute and 45, I think that's what it was. All right.
Just a couple of quick hits with regards to the developer. Eight years ago, my understanding of the history is the, the developer that did build the homes in the enclave resurrected it out of a default condition that that neighborhood was in for several years, so I don't necessarily know about what the intent of that developer was. And if, if, it is correct that obviously if the project gets turned down as an SP, which we believe is more context sensitive, there's always competing interest, but the neighbors that are around the perimeter, we see is this design helping that. And either way, the road and the connectivity is going to be there, the stormwater issues would be resolved during the design phase, which is the next phase of either the SP or pursuing the cluster. You know, the traffic either way. And as Mr. Weigle said, with regards to 10,000 square foot lots, that would be what we would intend to pursue with regards to a cluster lot option. But again, you know, was our understanding, yes, there's competing interest, but from the, the neighbors that attended the meeting, there seemed to be momentum because of the context sensitive we were presenting, that architectural standards would be part of the zoning. And again, we look forward to what your first question is here in a, in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. How about we go with Commissioner Tibbs?
No comment. I, I agree with staff recommendation.
Commissioner Ains.
I grew up learning how to skateboard on these streets 45 years ago. I know these streets very well. I'm going to support staff's recommendation and encourage staff, when it comes back through, not to connect these streets. This is a really great area of dead end streets.
Please, no outbursts. Okay. Here we go. Council lady.
Thank you. I think the staff made a pretty compelling list of, of things that, that didn't fit within requirements, policy-wise, that we need to require, so I'm, I'm going to agree with the staff.
There you go.
I think the staff, it makes sense.
Commissioner Haggen dear.
I have nothing to add, so I'll make a motion that we go with staff's recommendation to disapprove.
That's a proper motion, proper second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and this has been disapproved per the staff recommendation. We're on item number eight. Yeah, let's get, well, yeah, let's wait, yeah, we gotta get Brenda real quick. We're on item eight, we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe it was North Korea, it might be.
Here we go.
Item number eight is a subdivision amendment application. The request is to remove the 30-foot setback along West Kirkwood Avenue. The property is highlighted in red, this is at the northwest corner of West Kirkwood Avenue and Kirkwood Avenue. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Current zoning is R8, the property is located at 838 Kirkwood Avenue. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance. This policy is intended to preserve the general character of the developed suburban residential neighborhoods, and when neighborhood maintenance policies do experience some changes over time, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the established neighborhood. The proposal in front of you identifies the 30-foot setback along West Kirkwood Avenue in the existing residence. So this is a platted setback, it's on the plat, that'd be the minimum setback. The application is to remove that 30-foot setback and have it go to what the zoning code would allow. The zoning code would allow a minimum of a 10-foot setback if the platted 30-foot setback was removed from this plat, and that would be allowed by the zoning code. Properties to the north are deeper set, they have a setback roughly about 30, about 60 feet, I'm sorry, and properties across West Kirkwood Avenue range from about 36 feet back to 46 feet back along that street. The street setbacks in this neighborhood are generally deep. By allowing a reduced setback, a residential unit could be closer to West Kirkwood Avenue than what we currently see on that street going north. The policy is a neighborhood maintenance policy and supports preserving the general character of the suburban residential neighborhoods, including block structures, setbacks in form, therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. We'll open this item up for public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Thanks for coming.
In case I go longer than I expected, let me save the two minutes, Mr. Chairman. My name's George Dean, I'm an attorney representing the applicant, address is 315 Demumbre Street. As was mentioned, this is a request to amend a previously approved plat with a 30-foot setback on the West Kirkman, Kirkwood side of the property. The, the reason we're here really is to ask the planning commission to take a look at it, because our disagreement with the staff is not from the standpoint of that they're in any sense wrong, but that, that there's a competing characteristic of this area of the community that is also valuable and important. And we think that if the 30-foot setback were removed, it would help us to preserve that part. And it basically goes like this, that the, the orientation of the properties, the buildings that were built, were built on this property, will be along Kirkwood. Along this two-block stretch, the homes are classic craftsman homes, and by eliminating the 30-foot setback that's required along West Kirkwood from the previous, previously approved plat, we'll be able to build smaller homes as far as height and wide, pull them down and make them wider, with the setback, and in essence, be more compatible with the other homes along that stretch of Kirkwood. Along West Kirkwood, the homes are taller, more the tall and skinnies, more modern approach. The applicant here is wanting to try to do something that is more consistent with what we think is probably a more sensitive area along the Kirkwood side of the property. Yes, this would require that the 30-foot setback be removed, and it would have, it would not be as deep, the setback obviously would not be as deep as some of the properties along West Kirkwood. But at the same time, what is gained is a better means of developing the property consistently with the older homes, the craftsman homes along Kirkwood itself. And so it comes down to a policy choice, really. Again, we can understand the staff's recommendation, but we'd ask the planning commission to look at it from our standpoint, that we can, basically, this lot's about 17,000 square feet, probably can put four units on it. My client's only proposing two. If the, the handout you have in front of you kind of makes the points I'm trying to make, with the 30-foot setback, we wind up with a 60-foot building envelope, house number one, 28 feet wide, house number two, 26, six feet between the houses, but it's going to require the homes to be 39 to 42 feet in height, two, two-and-a-half story type of design. If the setback along West Kirkwood is reduced to 10 feet, that's the requirement under the zoning regulations, that allows the expansion of the building envelope from 60 to 80 feet. The first house and second house can both be 35 feet wide, adds an additional couple of feet, four feet between the homes, reduces the height from possibly 42 and two-and-a-half stories down to 35 and one-and-a-half stories, which again, we see as being much more consistent with the craftsman-style homes along Kirkwood itself. The third sheet that you have in front of you is just a suggestion that if the planning commission were to remove the 10-foot, I'm sorry, the 30-foot, and allow us to build with the minimum requirement, the zoning ordinance... with the minimum requirement of the zoning ordinance, we would certainly not have any opposition to conditions placed on the plat that would require a maximum height of 35 feet, one-and-a-half stories, the two-house maximum, and orientation to Kirkwood itself. We've talked to the neighbors. Substantial number of them are in favor of this, looking at it as beneficial to have the smaller and wider homes. The other agencies from Metro have approved. And again, it's really just which characteristic of the property is more important from the perspective of the planning commission. If the 30-foot setback remains, my client's going to have to build a little narrower and higher. If the 30-foot setback is removed, it allows a smaller and wider base home. If anybody has any questions, be glad to respond. My representative of my clients here, Lucas Chestwood, Chestnut, and he'd like to say a few things as well.
Hi, I'm Lucas Chestnut. I'm the property owner at 838 Kirkwood. I'm here to try to be a responsible developer. What we do does not always make everyone happy, and you all have letters of opposition from a few neighbors on the West Kirkwood Street. I received those from the staff and then mailed letters to all of them, asking to have a meeting at the lot and to talk about it. I met with a couple of neighbors there, one of which was behind on West Kirkwood, Ms. Mary Mitchell. She then sent a letter of support to us, to you. It's in your last set of old letters that she received before the meeting. And also, so I agree with her. She requested that we put in some kind of landscape buffer between the back of our lot and facing her way, so we've worked out an agreement with her to take care of that. We met with James Kirby across the street, who organized the letters of opposition, and he didn't speak for it at the time when we were meeting in the yard, but he did say he would take it under consideration, and I didn't see him here, or I would have spent the last three and a half hours to discuss it with him. So I did also meet with a neighbor across the street that lives in one of the classic craftsmen that we're trying to replicate or complement the design of, and her husband came over, and then she emailed in a letter of support to staff as well, saying that she supported our approach to build the shorter houses. So I've made mistakes in the past on some of the houses we built in neighborhoods when I first started, and I've admitted that was one of them was in 12 South on Wall Church Avenue, and I don't want to do that again. So we've taken a more conscious effort to build houses that complement the neighborhood and neighborhoods that we build in when we can. And I could have started building a couple of months ago. I could have saved a lot of money on having to put a sidewalk around the corner, because I'm one of the new lots that gets to, oh, have sidewalks down the side. I already have them in the front, but I'm one of the people that really gets penalized with 180 feet down the side. I chose not to do that because I felt like we're doing the right thing. And I tell you, I would ask you that the focus is on Kirkwood and not West Kirkwood, just like George said. And we're going to stagger. The first 60 feet are going to be setback by code and the platted setback. The next 70 feet or so would be the side of the house, and then there's going to be 20 feet to the garage door, and then an open space, the last 15 to 20 feet, for the access to the interior home. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone here wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Probably don't need to rebuttal, but we'll close the public hearing. That's all right with you guys. And how about we start with Commissioner Diaz.
I appreciate you trying to do the right thing. I think a lot of us, you know, would like to see more houses being in the, you know, keeping in the scale and the height of the character. I just had a question about whether this has to go to the BZA too? Are we doing a recommend -- no, it doesn't have to go? Okay. I was just wondering about that. And also, would the planning staff be okay with the houses fronting on West Kirkwood Avenue?
The Metro zoning code would allow the house to either front Kirkwood Avenue, both houses Kirkwood Avenue, or one house fronting West Kirkwood Avenue, so we wouldn't dictate that on the plat.
Because I see it fitting that way. I feel like it would fit with that existing setback if you have like one of the houses that's the one that's on Kirkwood and the front one, you could have a double front inch and then the one in the back. I think, you know, it would fit. I think you just have to be creative with the parking, but I don't really see a hardship here, so I support planning staff recommendation.
I agree. I don't see a hardship. Where did the 30-foot come from? I mean, was that?
It was on the original plat many, many years ago, and so it was identified on the plat, and that's the minimum setback that they would have had to have.
I mean, I think the West Kirkwood, you know, slotting one house out to where it's in 10 feet of the property line is not going to be consistent with that part of the neighborhood. So I agree, and I understand the staff's opinion. I appreciate their efforts to blend in with the neighborhood, to think that's important, but it's kind of where I am.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I also agree with staff recommendation.
Counsel lady.
All right, I need an education on plat. Explain to me how a plat gets done and why it's binding and why that's more important than the contextual setback that we usually talk about in a neighborhood maintenance type of setting.
That's a great question. So on this plat, there was a setback on West Kirkwood Avenue, which is right here along the side. Now, if that -- I need to find my mouse. I'm sorry, I'm backwards here. Hold on for one second. And this would be considered the front of the lot on Kirkwood Avenue, per the Metro zoning code, per the zoning administrator. So this would then be considered a side lot, okay? Contextual setbacks, per the zoning administrator, would only be along the this side Kirkwood Avenue. So that's why it could be reduced, the setback. The zoning would allow it to a minimum of 20 feet, but it actually can be reduced as it's considered a side street, and that's when contextual setbacks are not included per the zoning administrator. But they are required along Kirkwood Avenue, just not West Kirkwood Avenue.
Okay. And we're talking about the setback from West Kirkwood for -- okay, this is helpful.
Yep.
The two, and the A, B, and C, I'm still not entirely sure what I'm looking at here. If, for example, conceptual lot layout B were to be utilized, I can't visualize how that fits on the lot facing Kirkwood, so maybe that's facing West Kirkwood? I've got lots of those you need. Oh.
Well, why don't we have the developer explain what the --
Yeah.
What he --
So option A that you see, I had submitted in my original packet, the layouts on this lot, so I apologize, but option A just shows the taller houses that I would have to build. Option B that shows the front-facing garages, that's the option. I would have a front-facing garage facing Kirkwood and a more square-sized house, and then a front-facing garage facing West Kirkwood.
Okay.
So what Ms. Diaz suggested on doing a front and back, I did that the next block over at 828 Kirkwood, remodeled the existing house and then faced the other house to vaults.
Right.
And so I didn't have garages, but that's how they were faced. Here, if I do that, when we explored it with our architect, we, the only option to make parking work is to have a front-facing garage. I can't, I don't have enough room to fit two normal houses on there, and even though there are some front-facing garages down Kirkwood, we don't think that's what fits the neighborhood here, so.
I agree with that. Okay, so then we get to option C.
Yes, ma'am.
And both of those fit on the Kirkwood lot, if you can get within 10 feet of West Kirkwood? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Both of those would fit and allow us to reduce the height of the houses as well.
Right. But then you've got the house that actually next door sits on West Kirkwood. I'm pointing to someone no one else can see, up there, lot number four, that probably is sitting back some 30 or 40 feet.
There's a 60-foot platted setback on that one.
So then it has a lovely view of the backyard of two houses, I guess. I mean, okay, 60-foot setback. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful to understand. So now back to staff questions. And so what we're saying is that because long ago this was platted with a 30-foot setback, just because it got written into the rules, where that's the guiding principle?
We're saying that that's the established pattern that was set by that original plat, and we're --
For that one lot?
For, and for West Kirkwood that has setbacks that are further. So what we're --
Okay.
What we're concerned about is if you reduce that to 10, then you have a house right next to a 60-foot setback.
Right.
And it just creates an inconsistent pattern.
So we would agree it works well for Kirkwood, but it causes some big problems for West Kirkwood in terms of everybody else looking at a house sticking out on the side. And I would tend to agree with that as well. I just want to make sure I understood it. And so if we disapprove, I mean, if we go with staff's recommendations, what ends up getting built on this? Are y'all back to square one, or do we, what does that leave the neighborhood with? The tall skinnies? Or the garages in the front?
I think they would be operating within the existing setback, and they would, if we're understanding that the developers' proposal, they would be building the homes closer together and taller.
And there are provisions in the zoning code now with duplexes to have proportional, so that they're proportional and that they're not the tall skinnies that we frequently hear about.
Okay. And they would be 30 feet off of West Kirkwood? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay. And then final thing is, this is a final plat, so we're done when we vote on this. This is not a recommendation of the council's.
Right. This is a final decision by the planning commission.
Okay. I'm not making a motion. I'm just still thinking.
We do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to support staff's recommendation to disapprove.
There, it's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse? Aye. There's one no. So five ayes and one no, and we're accepting the staff's recommendation to disapprove. All right. We are at the end of our agenda, but we do have some business to take care of, but let's go through some of the other things. We actually have item H28, the election of officers and appointments to the Parks Board and also the Historic Zoning Commission. And then there's also one seat on the Executive Committee. So the Executive Committee consists of the Chair, the Vice Chair, and then Lillian, Commissioner has, she's the third person on the Executive Committee, so Commissioner Black's here. So I just wanted to let you all know that. So we will need to do the election of officers first. So is there, I know that Doug has maybe talked to some of you all, or, and that yet. So we need to start this process.
Start this process.
Make the same motion to approve?
I think someone needs to make a motion to recommend the Chair and the Vice Chair, and it probably should be someone other than the Chair.
So I will recommend, under duress, no, I'm kidding. I'll make a motion that we recommend our esteemed Chair, current Chair, Mr. Atkins. Second. Mr. Atkins?
Well --
Does someone else have to run that?
Yes, someone else would have to run the --
We have a proper motion and a second.
I heard a second, and so.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries? No nays.
All right. And then the Vice Chair, who is Commissioner Farr.
I would nominate Commissioner Farr for reelection.
Proper motion. Second, any other discussion?
Does she still want it?
We're going to make her do it because she's not here. No, she does, is my understanding. So that's a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. All right, Jessica will be the Vice Chair. Now, we can do historic. Our current person is Commissioner Tibbs, and -- Do it again? He would love to do it again. He's our historic expert, so we appreciate you very much for doing that. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Ayes have it. Now, we're on to Parks. We do have Commissioner Diaz is currently doing that. There's been some interest by Commissioner Haynes to do it. So if that's okay with you, Commissioner. So is there a motion?
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Diaz to do that. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Ayes have it, and he will love some more work, Commissioner Haynes, and thank you for serving, Commissioner. We really appreciate it. There's a lot going on in Parks right now. Also, the Executive Committee, we need one other person, and Commissioner Black's here has agreed to do it again, so is there a motion to?
I'll move.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Ayes have it. So we have concluded our internal election of officers and appointments, and we'll make sure that's reflected in the record, make sure that we do that. Anything in zoning? Historic zoning?
No report.
Nope. Parks, anything?
Still working on trying to submit the application or, yeah, the application process for the director, so that's still going on for the Parks Department.
Okay. Next is the Executive Committee report. We really, it was the election of officers is really what we wanted to, I wanted to talk about, but I appreciate everybody. I want to say thank you for allowing me to be Chair. You know, it's an honor to be part of this group. I think that we, as a group, take a lot of thoughtful process, a lot of thought into our actions, and I want to say thank you to all of the Commissioners for really doing a great job and volunteering your time and efforts, and so thank you all for doing that. I know it takes a lot of time and effort. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of detailed information, and it's very complicated sometimes, so I want to say thank you. I know that I appreciate you all very, very much for doing that and allowing me to be part of this group. I think it's an honor, so thank you. Next, anything going on at the council, or do you want to report?
I'll just mention the council will be holding an election for their Planning Commission representative in the next month or two. So I have thoroughly enjoyed being part of this body, but there'll probably be someone different sitting in this chair.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
We'd love to have you back.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been great, and I've certainly learned a lot, and hopefully I've contributed. So it's not immediate, but it is coming up in the next month or two, I think.
Well, thank you for your service. It's, you know, it's a lot of work just being on the council and then adding this.
Double the fun to do both.
You've been an integral part of our group.
Can they just reelect you? Do you have to leave?
Yeah.
Oh, you're not paying.
We can discuss that offline. All right. Next meeting, August 24th, and that concludes. And so is there a motion to adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.